We'll call the budget hearing to order. We'll get right into it. Resolution 2024-21 sanitation. Josh, come on up.
Resolution number 2024-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing rate schedules pertaining to City of Apopka municipal refuse, collection services, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Josh Robinson, Public Services. So tonight we're presenting the request from Sanitation Division for a 10% rate increase. The, as you know, the division's funded by user fees. And I provided you some information over the past three years, 21 through 23, showing our year-over-year cost increases, excuse me, that have averaged about 10% per year, and we're projecting that in the coming year. We are sensitive to the hardships. We don't ask for this lightly. We ask for it based on a reasonable, you know, assumption of cost increase. We do, or I do track, you know, our efficiency and our quality of service. That the one spreadsheet I provided you shows some statistics in the year-over-year growth of house count and tons, which drives our costs, our payroll hours and our, so our hours per ton have steadily increased or stayed flat, meaning we, it takes an hour per ton, per driver and on average, and we maintain that. And I track missed pickups per 1,000 homes, and we have actually drove that down just a tad, and we're at .9 per thousand homes. The goal is one per thousand, which is like .001% of services rendered each week. So I felt like the value there, the quality is there, the efficiency is there. And then I've provided some of the major year-over-year changes in cost. As you can see, the salaries themselves have went up pretty modestly, 3% per year. Total employee cost a little more at 7%. Tibbing fee is a big one, which is about a third of our total cost, $2 million, just for disposal, that we pay the county or Waste Management for disposal of waste. And it's averaged 12%, and we've been advised by the county that to expect probably a 12% increase per year over the next few years, perceivably. Rentals and leases, we've had to rent more equipment these past few years due to some of the truck fires and some of the struggles we've had with our fleet maintenance, which we're working on. Temp labor went up due to increase in the rates there, the cost to the workers. And we did add that pump route this past year, which added, you know, basically 40,000 for that additional body. And of course, the machinery that are the trucks, that just is a fluctuation there. We, we have a plan, you know, we run them eight years on the front line, and we run them 10 years as a backup, and we just try to maintain that plan, keep good reliable equipment in place. So that's pretty much unavoidable. We purchase off the sheriff's contract, so it's a competitive bid. So the, I think the numbers are justified for the increase. We kind of as a reality check, just to see, not as a justification, but just as you can see, we're still among the most cost-effective out there in terms of, on the rate, the solid waste rate comparisons. The cities at this, this rate would move us to 2312, which is a tad less than, than any of the others out there, except for Orlando. They do once a week pickup. Winter Garden, our, our programs are almost identical in terms of how we operate and the level of service we provide, twice a week, and they're at, just above us at 2356. And the City of Akoi, a good bit above us at 2485, twice a week, and they, they had put that out to bid a few years back. Orange County's going to 25, or went to 25 this year, and they have an RFP on the street, so we're gonna see around the first of September what it costs to go to bid. And, and he said, he couldn't release the numbers to us, but he said it's gonna, that their lowest bid was gonna justify rate increases for most of the cities that operate in the county here. So, so with that, we request the 10% rate increase next year, which they're included in the resolution itself, the various services. Any questions?
Any questions for Josh?
Twenty-five altogether, including the ancillary trucks. The, like the support trucks, pickups, and what, I think there's 21 big, big trucks, collection trucks. Oh, subdivisions, I wouldn't even know, but the house count is looking like it's gonna be around 20, a little over 20,000 this coming year. We're right about that now, 1908, I think now. We've also had benefits of, you know, we had some coronavirus funding that helped us with some of the truck purchases we've done over the past three years. You know, that's gone. We've absorbed our, our reserves. That's gone. There's just nothing left for the division to absorb. Oh, yeah, every year, every year, you see about two on average. The last ones we ordered, I believe it's been, will have been 14 months since I ordered the one that we got this week. And some are even longer, the rear loaders, they may end up be, I haven't seen them yet. They could be 18 months before we get those.
So even though we're ordering a truck every year, you're saying, by the time they get delivered to us, is anywhere from 18 months to, to years?
So, right. So last year, we basically took my five-year plan and shifted it up one year. So that helped us kind of catch back up. So we had, the year before last, we had a big number of trucks purchased.
You have it so that you have a truck coming in.
So the cycle should be pretty much back on, on time after we did that shift.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Josh?
You said you'd exhaust your reserves. With this rate increase, are we gonna be able to start rebuilding those reserves?
Not this year. Do we want to talk about the future years?
Josh is much taller than me. We, I think with the rate increase, we should, because when we talk to the rate analysts, we try to build reserves in these enterprise funds. And so it should factor at least about 180 days that we're trying to build over the next five years.
All right.
Okay. But if that is incorrect, I will let you know. But that was the plan.
Mr. Nesta? Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Anybody in the public who should speak on this one?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. First, Josh, you and your team do an incredible job. Really appreciate it. Your, your, your people on the field are just really wonderful. Just a couple of questions. Why do you refer to the aspect of some challenges with fleet maintenance? Can you elaborate or? I'm sorry, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Should have tackled you on the way up.
Sure. So we have, we've done an analysis of the workload based on the number of units that the fleet division has to service. Excuse me, and Charlie and I put a, we picked an assumption of the average time it took per, per unit. So we come up with a total number of labor hours we expect to need, and it's showed a pretty severe shortage. So that's why we've added the four additional people for 2025 for a second shift.
Okay, super. Thank you. And then I guess Josh, don't run too far. Next question I have for everyone's department heads come up here. Does the current budget meet the core essentials that you need? Does the current budget reflect any removal, of the removal of any non-essential or duplicate or items that might be called waste?
No, it's just retirees expended.
Okay. And finally, does the current budget now reflect everything you need for this current budget year to meet taxpayer needs? Thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm gonna just walk with a step stool from now. Nikki McGuire, Apopka, Florida, 32703. My question is this. I have nothing against any of the departments within the City of Apopka. However, last year we had a budget. Then I sat and I watched throughout the entire year, pretty much for, I would say roughly monthly, there being a request to adjust the budget. Now, you guys plan your budget. Citizens have to plan their budget as well. We were told about 40%, which is now at 23.75% of water. Now we have 10% for utilities, for sanitation. Is there anything else that's in the work? Because it's kind of hard for us to, as citizens, to just keep guessing and not knowing what next, or wait throughout the year for you guys to adjust the budget, and then next fiscal year, we're gonna be hit hard again. So is this the two major items, or are there anything else we need to be concerned about?
What we're doing now is just utilities. So this is just water, wastewater, reclaimed water and sanitation. So these are just, we'll get to the, and then we'll have the, the ad verum. The property tax rate will be after that.
Okay, so, because it will be nice for us to know a total of all the areas that's gonna be increased, and for us to get at least, like every other thing, every other businesses that raise rates, at least a 30 days notice, so we can adjust on our end. The fiscal year begins October 1st. We're less than a month away, and all these changes to hit us all at once. Thank you.
I'm gonna help the next person.
Anybody else? Okay. Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for most. Okay, sure. Come on.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Tricia Morris, 32712 zip code. I want to publicly thank Josh because the sanitation folks are truly great. So I just want you to know, it's nothing against what you do. I really appreciate it. There are times, sometimes when they don't pick up the sanitation on a particular day, and I call, and they come the following day, and they're always very respectful. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing. The only reason why I'm, I'm commenting is because some of you were here a few weeks ago, and we were talking, we were expressing concerns about the increase in the water rate. And, and it's not that, I know for, I can speak for myself, and some people feel like me. It's not that we don't think they deserve a rate. It's just that our salaries are not going up at that same rate. So he's, Josh is asking for 10%, and I believe Josh and his workers should get something, because I think one of the most important things for any city is to have good water and have good sanitation. You don't have those, your community is going to suffer severely. But 10%, I, we, I know I cannot afford it right now. Maybe we should, could be, we can negotiate maybe 3%, 5%, because they should get something, because their work is extremely important. But 10%, and then we're gonna be talking about the increase in the, in the, with the, with the other utilities, and then we're looking at a proposed budget for taxes. That's gonna be increased. It's a bit too much. So I'm just asking that you please reconsider. Just keep that in mind. That's not the only thing that's going up. All of these other things are going up as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Ian Kimbrel, 2863 Park Meadow Drive, Apopka, Florida. I first want to start off by saying I apologize to each and every one of you, the board members, as my exit at the last meeting was probably not professional. So to each and every one of you, I apologize. I just want to make sure I'm tracking this right, because I'm new at all this. But I do believe that Mr. Josh said that there were about 19,000 homes. And then I think you followed up with only adding about 1,000 next year? Is that what I understood? To 20,000? Is that what you said, sir? Because I, I don't know. I see a lot more development going up with more than 1,000 homes, I would imagine, being added to the services in this next year. And even at a $2.10 increase, that's about, if we were staying at 19,000, that's $38,000, you know, extra a month. But I, I don't foresee, we're only adding 1,000 homes to the, to the business next year, with all the business, all the growth I see going around Apopka. So maybe I'm just wrong, or maybe I misunderstood. I'm not sure.
Josh, is that?
So we, so what was it years ago? I'm sorry. We only added 400 homes later? So that's what about, my math is off, about 6,000 roughly? My, I did go to school in Georgia, but I'm not sure. Maybe I misunderstand again. I'm not an economics, but I just would want to make sure that, I believe there's more than 1,000 homes being added to the services in it. Even at 10%, a $2 increase, you're looking at about a $40,000 a month increase. So again, our pockets are very tight out here as well. I am blessed, like I mentioned last time, to be able to afford my bills, but listening here at the last meeting and hearing ladies unfortunately not even, being able to flush their toilets broke my heart, and really opened my eyes to the significant struggles that some others in our community are going through. So that's a very big concern of mine. Again, with all these other increases going up around, it's not just the 10% in the sewage. It's, you know, the 22.75 or 23% down from 40% in the garden, the water, and, you know, just everything else. Again, I just ask that you guys take that in consideration when making your decision this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Woodham. You know, I, I don't have a problem with us raising our, the price of operations, especially when we got some very fine employees here within the city. What does bother me is I feel more and more I look at this and listen to, not only the superintendents of the departments. We're here covering the mayor's deficiency in the overall budget, the general funds. We've used the money from, to help the needy, to help balance the budget. We've used the money that was given as a, as a grant to fix this infrastructure, use it to balance the budget. But we're here paying for Tiger Bay Club that does the citizens of Apopka no good at all. But it's an organization he wants to be a member of. I think y'all, besides the citizens of Apopka, need to tighten the belts. My services are perfect in my house. My sanitation, my garbage is picked up, my streets are cleaned. I have no issues, and I have no issues paying a little extra for that in taxes. But what does aggravate me is when there's funds that we can't even be accounted for yet. And we had a budget that was gonna, we was gonna have the forensic audit done. But there again, Mayor Nelson pulled a swift one. He got people to, oh, no, it's not worth it. But he sits up here and brags that he's saved this city millions of dollars in payments every year because he put, got it paid off early and stuff like that. But we still don't know where the money came from or where it's at. But I'm tired of having to balance his budget. I think he needs to tighten his belt, and y'all need to look at that, too. And there is a lot of people in Apopka. That's a big chunk, a big chunk. And I like the, where all the, where all the money that we get for, for impact fees, where's that at? That's supposed to be a line item, if I'm not mistaken. It's supposed to be used for certain things. Is it there?
Okay, anybody else?
Oh, you knew I was gonna be back, right? Name is Rob Josephson, Oak Hill Reserve. This is all becoming a matter of, you know, funding or revenue is, is what the city is, I guess, depleted in and needs to gain it somewhere. Okay? As a gentleman back here alluded to, he can afford the water increase. I can too, but there's a lot of people who can't. And I think you need to start considering that fact. You know, what about the 28-year-old female who has two small kids living in a dilapidated mobile home that's maybe 25 years old in one of our mobile home parks, and then is driving a 1997 Toyota Corolla and can't afford it? You know, I mean, think about it. You know, not everybody's driving, you know, a new Nissan Armada with a V8 engine. Okay? So you really need to start thinking about the people who can't afford this. Now, I, I don't know anything about your budget. If you want me to review it with you, I'll be more than happy to. But I think you need to start looking at where to pull revenue that can fund this so that you don't have to charge what you're trying to charge in the water. A gentleman mentioned that you have F-150s. When I looked at that board last week, and unfortunately, I know you're gonna be unhappy. I won't be here next week. I have a homeowners association meeting at the same time yours is. But I remember seeing at least two or three F-150s up on the board last week. Okay? I don't know what you pay for them, but when I see those F-150s, usually it's somebody going around the neighborhood, and it says water maintenance on the side. So you spent the money on an F-150. What about getting Ford Mavericks with the four-cylinder, which is about $10,000 less, and I just saved you 20 to 30,000 just now? Number one. Number two, how many concerts are we putting on over at the amphitheater nowadays? It used to be every week almost. What is it now? Anybody?
Twice.
Twice a month?
Twice a month.
So do we really, a couple of things. Do we really need a concert twice a month? First of all, you're paying the individuals to come in, and I only know that because I have a friend who performs in Branson who wanted to do it, but you didn't want to pay him $7,000 or $8,000. So you're paying for those concerts, and basically, twice a month? Do we really need that? Can we go down to once a month and save one? Let's go one step further, my, in my thoughts. First of all, when people go there, they're either sitting under the amphitheater cover, in the nice seats, or they bought their lawn chairs, or they bought a tenor, whatever they did. And basically, why can't you charge a $5 fee for people who want to sit under the covers so they're not sitting in the sun and nice, I want to sit in those nice chairs? $5 a head to sit in the amphitheater. Think about it. More fun, more, more revenue. Okay? Let's go one more step. You have a lot of businesses that are very large businesses in this community. You have Amazon out there. You have Goya sitting out there, and you have a lot of them that do a lot of business and make a lot of money. So you want to pass this on across the board to people who live in our community, some of which really can't afford it, where why aren't you looking at what the grosser net is on some of these larger businesses? And if you own businesses in here, I'm sorry I'm saying this, so don't throw anything at me. But why can't you look at the grosser net of some of the larger businesses in here and charge them more on their water when they can probably afford it? I'm just throwing these out there. But I think you have other places you can look to get revenue, and I don't think you're looking at them.
We need to try to stay on, this is just the sanitation. We're getting kind of off the, we, we got water rates are coming, so we just need to kind of stay on. Okay. No problem.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I don't hear a lot of things while I'm sitting back there, so I won't try to go over those, but I feel you 100%. When I look at the budget, I look at priorities. When you set in the budget, you set your priorities. Okay? Let's look at a few things since I've been going to some of these city council meetings.
We want to try to stay on.
This, this, this is the budget. This is the budget.
We've got, that's coming up. We, right now, we're on sanitation.
We're on sanitation?
Correct. We, we'll, you'll get your opportunity to talk about the, the overall budget, and you can talk about the water rates as well, but this is.
Well, this, this is, this is hand-in-hand where I'm going with this, priorities. Okay? When you talk about sanitation, one, are we man-proper? So when you have equipment, if you have things that you're supposed to do your preventative maintenance on to preserve, to preserve the lifespan, when that don't happen, it costs you more money. Because instead of getting the life expectancy that we're supposed to get out of the equipment, it's breaking down because nobody's doing them monthly, weekly, yearly PMs on it. And so now, when you look at where we at, what caused this shortfall? What caused that we have to do an increase? That's the thing that we don't look at. We have department heads coming up here scared to say what they need. So when you look at that, and then when these things come to you, and the public keep bringing you these same things, and it falls on deaf ears. So that's where the frustration at. We know we are undermanned. Matter of fact, Mayor, you had somebody come in here, and, and they looked over all the department heads. We paid for that. They said the department heads was fine. The only people that was lacking was yourself. That's how you got your $75,000 rates. So what I'm saying to you, we need to come out and hold people accountable. I elect, I voted for each one of you up there, other than one. And I'll be damned if I'm not gonna hold you accountable for my vote.
And I'll be damned if I'm not going to hold you accountable for my vote. And right now, there is only one person up there who's got the interest of the people and that is Ben Show. So I challenge everybody in the community, come out, get involved, bring your expertise to this city. That's what makes our community thrive. When we all are looking out for each other, we all are putting our experience, our training and our knowledge together to be one united community. And that's what I want to see done moving forward. Thank you.
Jeff Tire, eleven-twenty leg drive. This is about sanitation. Just wondering, do we have a builder impact fee for sanitation? I'm looking through the impact fees here. No, we don't. Josh is going to need more trucks. We're going to build way more than a thousand houses in the next year or two. He's going to need more trucks. He's going to need more people. The city start, needs to start thinking about the impact fee increases for the builders. So we're not paying, so the residents aren't paying, the residents that already live here. We need to get an impact fee for sanitation. There's no reason why we shouldn't have one.
Anybody else? Okay, close the public hearing. Looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
I just want to, before we do that, just want to discuss a couple of the comments that were made just to we hear you for sure. So one of them is uh the comment about can we just reduce it at a lower rate? The the problem that I see overall is that we just, we haven't ever kept up properly with where we should have been slowly increasing year over year. Two and a half percent, three percent every year, and now it's a bigger chunk. From the data that we have here, and I wish it was shown to everybody in the room as well, everyone watching online, is that the direct salary increases from the data that we're seeing is just a three percent increase. So it's not exclusively going to salaries. This increase, it's going towards increased fees that we can't control. Um, so, so that's part of the issue. And in reference to the more than a thousand homes, I think we, and I could be wrong on this, I I we may only be doing about a hundred home, a hundred COs per month. I think is what our city is able to do. So it, it's around there, seventy-five a month. So yes, we're going to be seeing huge growth here soon, but it's not exactly, um, we're not going to be hitting those thousands every year, but we are definitely going to see that. So we're going to continue to see increases like that. Um, and the funding for, taking funding out of one project and putting it into this, these are enterprise funds. We have to run it as its own business. And we can't be borrowing from other areas, but it does help to save money in in other areas. So um, I think that was a good point as well. And then impact fees for this. We don't have an impact fee for sanitation, correct? Okay. That's a good idea though, right? I think that's, I I think that's a really good idea.
We have police, fire, recreation and water, wastewater and reclaim um impact fees, but no, nothing for sanitation. We'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I think that's a
If it's feasible.
Big value add.
We'll see.
Do, do other cities have the
I'm not aware. No, not to my knowledge. But we'll see. If there's an opportunity, we'll see.
Absolutely. I think having the new residents, the builders pay that.
I I I would only add that from the experience of the cities that we have, not of, not all of them are as big as Apopka. But they all contracted out, so there's no cap charge for them to pass on because they're contracted with uh, they have a franchise with a waste management or somebody like that. So there's nothing to pass on. Like if we had a wa, if if one of my city, actually, two of my cities get their water from Altamont Springs, so they don't have a water impact fee because they're getting the water from Altamont Springs. They just paid the hookup for Altamont Springs. So just a thought.
So are you recommending us go get a third-party contractor then?
Yeah, I'm saying if we're doing our own uh uh sanitation, then perhaps there's a basis for it. I've never had it studied, never seen it studied. But the other way it's done is by uh offering a franchise to one of the major vendors and there are several.
Okay, well, we can't do that right now, but that is an option for sure.
We've, we've closed the public, we've, we've closed, we've closed the public hearing, but you got one, one quick question?
Yes.
About sanitation? Sure, come on up. Sure.
Yes, so Erica Mann, nineteen oh seven Sandaline Point Loop. Uh, real quick, Nick, regarding something that you said, I wanted to clarify. When you said the hundred homes, does that include apartments?
Yes, so COs, total COs. So that, that's what our department, I could be wrong on those numbers if if um Mr. Smith or any community development. Last time I checked, which a few months ago, they were right around that somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred per month. So it's not the whole building, but uh, like if it's an apartment complex, so. So yeah.
Copy. Thank you.
All right.
Just one question for Josh. Um, if, I'm sorry, you have to come back. I mean, we, we, we determined ten percent. Were there any charts done with less than ten percent? Did you do like five percent, three percent? I mean, did you see, did you do anything with comparisons? We just went straight to ten percent?
Yeah, um, yeah, I just basically, the sanitation budget isn't very complicated. It's, it's, it's about, it's really four or five lines that drive the toe, you know, labor, fuel, maintenance and disposal, those things. And most of that, labor somewhat, we control. And I monitor that. That's where I talked about the homes, you know, per ton uh or the labor hours per ton. But the costs kind of are what they are. Um, you could, the, as far as going out to bid, like, like I said, the county's doing that right now. We're about to see. Well, and and the one, the one here, uh, O'Koey, who did go out the bid two or three years ago. They're the, they're the second highest on here. So that doesn't necessarily get you, takes a lot of headache away from you, but uh, maybe. But it, it doesn't necessarily save you money, but that isn't one way to look at it.
Would you be open to the, the impact fees for sanitation? Something that we can explore and and?
I've never heard of that. All, there is, the, I think where the impact is, so when we we have to buy a new garbage truck for that one thousand and first home, right? Theoretically. So there is, and that's a half a million dollars roughly, so there is some additional expense to start up before those, all those homes are built and they're paying revenues in. But I don't know if that's a half a million dollars, if that's, if the, the, the rate pair would even feel.
I mean, if it saves some of us, any money is, is better.
Something could be, could be looked at.
I mean, we'd be able to, and I guess this is more probably Mr. Sherman question. Can we, is there something we can finalize on that? Maybe look into it post this so that we can maybe hit this for, for next um fiscal year?
Yes, we can bring it up with the rate analysis. As you know, we're still working on the, on the studies. We did kind of finish the sanitation and I know that we were looking at some kind of commercial rate increase that we're going to consider next year.
We're, we're looking at a little higher than average rate increase for the commercial because uh, uh, you know, just from a competition standpoint, we're extremely low.
Extremely low on that.
That would help benefit the residential operate rate fair.
Absolutely. Okay, we can do both of those and have our, our um vendor that's looking into that, add that to the, the mix. I think that'd be super helpful for.
And they will, once everything is done, come in and
Do a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll expect that to be on there then, please. Yeah, when do they, when, do you have a timeline of when they should be presented?
Not yet, because we're still finalizing that CIP.
Yep.
Yeah.
Before the next fiscal year?
Uh, or at the beginning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Still looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
There it is. Okay.
That didn't have to be unanimous though, correct?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't have.
Okay, that's fine. I don't know whether, we're doing a showcase over here. Let's keep it moving. Talk about decorum.
Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing FY twenty twenty-five rate schedules pertaining to City of Apopka water use, charges and deposits, wastewater use charges and deposits, distributed wastewater treatment system, use charges and deposits, and reclaimed water rates and providing an effective date.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're back again. This time I want to give you a kind of brief overview. Um, this thing. Okay, of how we got to this point in regards to um water, wastewater and sewer rates. On August fifth, um, the first notification went out pertaining to a forty percent, forty percent, fifteen percent increase. Um, due to the proposed increase, we, we will continue to work with the rate consultant because we're trying to push it down in the outer years. Over the past few months, the staff um discussed the need to increase the rates due to significant cost increases and needed improvements. And the following, that took place in the following meetings on July tenth, twenty twenty-four, the budget workshop. July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the special council meeting, August twenty-eighth at the budget workshop, um, further discussions. And of course, at the September fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting at one-thirty. And we're now here. Um, we sent out a final notification, I'm sorry, on September ninth. It went out in email on the eleventh and twelfth, and it was posted on our website uh with detailed information in regards to the increase of twenty-three point seven five. So we started out trying to cut the forty percent down to twenty percent and we're looking at about three point two million in cuts that would have to be made. On the August twenty-eighth meeting, we decided not to do the entire three point two, but we left with two point two. Leaving the Assistant Director Public Service position in the budget, the Customer Service Specialist position in the budget, the Water Plant Infrastructure Assessment of about a hundred and fifty thousand and the asbestos water main replacement project of about five hundred thousand. Based on the twenty-three point seven five, uh, the proposed rates, and this is just water and wastewater, you can see where we compare to like the City of Orlando, City of St. Cloud, City of Eustis, Taverri, Zocala, Sanford, Leesburg and others. So we're kind of in the middle a little bit there. This is the detail pertaining to the budget for the twenty-three point seven five percent. Um, total budget revenue is thirty-two point eight, then expenditure is thirty-two point eight. That's the one that's highlighted in purple. Now in addition, the following list of projects, there are some key projects that contribute to why we're at the point where we are. And that equates to about nineteen point eight million dollars. That's included in our current year budget. These are improvements and repairs and renewals and replacements that needed to take place over the last two to three years in order to maintain our system properly. Um, and this is just for Fund four oh one. Any part of these projects that may be expansion related is funded out of the four oh three. So this, like eleven key projects here, Gross and Barker Water Treatment Plant, well, number one, two and three. Uh, Gross and Barker Treatment Plant, one point five million gallons storage tank. That point five is considered expansion. So hopefully I'm saying that right, right, Mayor. Water Main Renewal and Replacement Program, an annual amount of about one point five million. North Rest Reclaim Storage Pond, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Golden Gem Reuse Pond retrofit, um, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Vic Road, wastewater, Sewer Force May Upgrade and Repairs, about one point seven million. And Water Collection System Pipeline Rehab Rehab and Replacement Program, five hundred thousand. Lift stations, um, three million dollars. Um, and the one that is grant funded is the Wakabakne Neighborhood with that conversion project. And about, it's a million of that, one point two is grant funded. So vehicles and equipment and machinery, one point six, and then other improvements, about two million. So over the past two years, the projects listed above increased due to cost, um, due to inflation, supply demand issues and other factors contribute to the adverse financial position of the city's utility operating fund. So in order to continue to improve and maintain our water and wastewater and reuse system, unfortunately, we will need to make this significant increase in our rates. In addition, we continue to work more efficiently and effectively to give our customers, our residents, the highest quality of water at the lowest rate. So hoping you find this information useful and have a better understanding of why we're at the twenty-three point seven five percent.
Questions for Blant or for Deo? Why don't you come on down just in case a question comes up? Any questions for either Blant or Deo?
This, for you guys are public.
Not, not yet. Yeah, we're, we'll get to, just a second. Any, any questions for?
So I have a few. I know that we had the agenda review, but of course, today I did get some questions and I did type them. Uh, when did the city first begin to dip into the general revenue to balance the utility budget?
I don't think they have.
Huh?
You talking about general fund?
Yeah.
They have not dipped into.
Oh, they have not dipped into that. Okay, that was a question. Um, what expenses or CIP expenses caused the deficit? And that's the list that you just provided.
It's me also.
You answered the first question, which will answer the last questions that they, that was provided to me today.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and just to, if we don't do this increase, this fund is completely out of money, if not in a negative.
It's already in the negative.
By how much?
Three, about, we estimate about three million.
So if we keep the water where it is right now, what happens? The water rates, what, what happens?
Just like anything else, you got to be able to pay your bills. So you got to have a balanced budget.
I understand.
So you have to make a decision.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, public, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Ian Kimbrel, uh, twenty-eight six-three Park Meadow Drive, Apopka, Florida, Magnolia Park Estates. Um, again, I mentioned earlier today that uh, it concerned me and alarmed me that most people or some people in some of the areas are having to not flush their toilets because they're concerned about what it's going to cost them. I brought my water bill uh with me and it's just my wife and I in my home. We don't have a very big house. It's a normal three-bedroom, two, or three-bedroom, two-bath. Um, we don't use water excessively. We don't have kids to wash clothes and all that stuff and dishes. Um, however, my water bill is, last month it was ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents and this month it was eighty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, that's a significant amount of money to pay for the water and trash. And meanwhile, the sewer is the blunt of the, the charge. It's thirty-seven dollars for my sewer. Um, and we're talking about increasing those rates. So you're talking about some of these other families are going to have to be pushing out if they have family or kids to do the dishes, wash the clothes and, and everything else, flush the toilets. Their bills are going to be well over a hundred dollars, if not closer to one-twenty, if I would imagine, in a house of, you know, five or six folks. Um, again, I, I don't mind paying increases on my, my, my utilities and things of that nature. If I'm going to be reassured that those funds are going to go to the one-third of the city meters that aren't working for your last meeting. Uh, my own neighbor communicated to me that he was out of town on vacation and had problems with his water meters coming out and not working properly and functioning. Heard here last week that, you know, one-third of the equipment is not operating, functioning properly, and you guys are just estimating bills based upon whoever lived there last year. I mean, I think that needs to be taken into reconsideration as far as what we're going to be increasing our members' bills to. Um, and then lastly, it's like, we talk about budgets and, and monies and, and got to pay bills, but uh, and this might not be the right spot for it, but I'm going to put it out there regardless. It's public information on gov salaries dot com. Uh, the City of Apopka's mayor's salary is uh in two, twenty twenty-two, uh, two hundred and twenty-four percent higher than the national average or Florida's average and a hundred and forty-nine percent higher than the average salary for this job nationwide. So I wish I got that much of a raise when I was working. So I wish I got that much of a raise when I was working. And from my understanding, you were the only one that got a raise after doing your your study, I'm not sure, again, I'm not as knowledgeable on all the things that. I probably should be, this is my first rodeo, I'm getting introduced very quickly, but. Uh when we're talking about raising everybody else's rates to pay the bills, I think that some people can maybe look at maybe taking some paid cuts. Um because that's a significant amount of money uh across the board of the the state national average or the state average and the national average. So again, ten percent might not be enough or sound like a lot to some people. But when you're talking about paying over a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars for your water bill, it's damaging to some of the members in this community. That don't maybe have as much money to pay their bills. So I just would like that to be on the note and the record before you guys make your decisions in increasing our rates, thank.
Auburn came in three six oh three Golden Gem Road, I might have misunderstood something a few moments ago. But I believe when you were discussing uh impact fees, that they said that there was a retrofit to Golden Gem Road for seven hundred and fifty eight, nine hundred and fifty thousand. How can we have a retrofit on a a facility that isn't even being commissioned yet? Uh in the first instance, it was more than sufficient reclaimed water come out of there. There were, as far as I'm aware, some ongoing negotiations with Saint John's. To alter some of the the capacity on that and I believe that that pipes were all ready to go in. But it's hard for me to understand why we're gonna say that we're gonna get almost a million dollars to retrofit a project that. At this particular moment in time, might never even come online. And if it does come online, it's gonna cost far more than you people have been budgeting for.
Leroy Bell twenty three zero eight Blue Meadows Court, again, I asked the question. I live in the city and I share some of the same sentiments as the rest of the citizens. But my concern also, and it seemed to be lost in every conversation. Is the people in south of Popka from Sixth Street, I mean, from Tenth Street South. With the sewer being raised, I think the sewer pipe go down as far as Thirteenth Street. I believe and it's no hookup from there south. Uh this administration have al- always said that we was behind in the B map on the B map. And it was so much stuff need to be done and public comment you were here again. All this come up on the rate hike. The city public work came out to my neighborhood to do some work to help. Set off some of the costs like keeping the drainage clean and all this different type stuff. If you come out and mod Helen and look at the drainage system. The drainage system, you can plant gardens where. We just spoke about the hookup of the construction going on John's Road. With all the rain going on right now, we got a. Uh a drain field full of sand. Where all this sand is washing off of John's Road down on Blue Meadows Court. But it's all come back down to some on the city part on their neglect. And I just don't think it's fair to be passing the hike on to the citizen.
Just got a couple of quick questions. Where we at now and how did we get there? So is there a corrective action plan in to correct what went wrong? So three years down the line, we're not revisiting the same thing? Because if we don't go and correct what's wrong, in three years from now, we're gonna be back here doing the same thing because we didn't correct anything, so. Is there an action plan together to correct what went wrong and to get us headed in the right direction? So we just not spending money to repair what's wrong? Now by the time we do that and get caught up, everything else, we got a new set of problems. So we gotta take a big look, we've gotta take a big picture look here, find out what's going on, say what needs to be done. And have dedicated fundings to get it done, so we're not back here three years later doing the same thing.
I've got a couple of things to ask. The water department, the guys, the crews that work in the water department. If we're under budget, why'd they y'all buy them different uniforms now? How much of that cost the city? Instead of the orange shirts, they've got new different shirts and pants. Who made that decision and the water department's broke? No answers and none at all. And how many employees there is in that department? No, I have a problem with it, but if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. Y'all owe the taxpayers pay more money for their water, but you won't buy guys out there that were happy. Wearing their orange city employee shirts, now they got tan ones, I think with stripes on it. Because they're not in the road construction, so the construction is still wearing the orange ones. You know, I don't understand that and also. If I'm not mistaken, Blanche says that we're not, we haven't used any money from the uh general funds to pay bills. We're, how much is, wh- what's costing us so much to operate what we're using? We received a grant, a federal grant to fix the Martin Street Wells Avenue uh Wells down there. That money was used to put the budget to balance it out, right Brian? Anyway, y'all are admit, our funds are being misused up here. Not out here. And you're asking the citizens to take care of y'all's downfall. And I think we should really start looking at it. And as far as changing the uniforms, that was just acid nut, especially if we're broken that department.
Rod Olson thirty one fifty six rolling hills lane, uh same question Dio and uh. Oh come on, my mind is going here, damn rate, does a current budget meet the core essentials we have right now? Blanche and Dio? Has all the infinite, any possible duplicates, waste items, all essential items, it's only down to essential items? That's correct. And and finally, does a concurrent budget reflect everything you need to get the job done?
That's a hard question.
Thank, thank you Dio, the 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 problem has been historically is that we keep differing maintenance and differing things down the road. We need to draw the line in the sand and say no more and start paying for what we have and move forward. I don't know the answer, but you look at the aspect of what we do and I know what it's like, some of you maybe have never been unemployed. But unemployed right away gets down to the bare essentials, gotta make my rent or house payment, I gotta pay the health insurance, I gotta pay my taxes. Uh I gotta have health insurance for my family, that's the basics, everything else goes, you don't need to go to concerts, you don't need any of the other things. What are the basic needs and we need to look at that, thank you.
Jeff Tire eleven twenty leg drive, um we're doing these improvements, most of them because of growth. And old infrastructure, old infrastructure and the growth that we have. Once again, let's look at the impact fees for the builders, they're the ones causing the strain on our city. We need to go after the builders and get a higher impact fee, Osceola County, Saint Cloud, everybody else is doing it. They're not gonna run away, we're the last frontier out here with the land to build these houses. We need to increase or look at increasing our impact fees. Another thing I think we need to do is a major evaluation of our complete water system, our storm water, our sewer and our water. Do a major evaluation of that. Either in-house or outside house really and see, maybe we need to do a general obligation bond. Maybe we need to do a bond to get our our infrastructure and water is the most important for the cities. To do that, to get us where we need to be, instead of this little going down the line with these increases, if we gotta do a bond referendum. To get the water department and and sewer and storm water where it needs to be for a growing city of our size and we need to do that. Another thing is, didn't we have utility reserves, Miss Blanche? Do we, did we ever have utility reserves and where have they gone? They've been used up?
She had one back there. Okay, yes, they've been used up, that's the part, that's why we said we're in a deficit.
Alright, thank you, I think we need to look at a bond referendum.
Anybody else?
Tricia Morris, Apopka, Florida, three two seven one two, I wasn't gonna speak because I said what I have to say, but. There are so many families who are not here right now because, you know, they have young children, you know, maybe they have elderly parents that they need to take care of. They probably didn't even read the the document that was um mailed about the increase. So since um I'm a social worker, I wanna speak for them as well as for myself. I'm not unreasonable, I understand that things need to be increased sometimes and I was looking at. The fact that it says with gross and blocker water treatment plant, you need an additional three point seven million. And I'm not even opposed to that because I want the children in this city to have clean drinking water. Our children are our most precious resources and if our children are not taken care of. Then pretty much we don't really have a society to look forward to, so I get that. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm new to this whole process and when I see that we are negative three million. We have a negative three million, I'm concerned that. If you guys vote, which I hope you don't, to increase as a twenty three point seven five percent. That maybe we're gonna come back here a few years and then you're gonna just wanna increase it again, I just feel like where is it gonna end? I I just feel like, I just feel like there is, like somebody kept saying, what is the correction plan? And I I haven't heard it and so I'm really concerned and yes, I am the person. Who does not, because I've been told by, I've been told by individuals who, you know, older women who have told me. When you do number one, don't flush every time because every time you flush, that's a dollar or two, three dollars going down the drain. I don't have those money to go down the drain, can you imagine that mother, that single parent with the three children? Who after you, and if they have special healthcare needs, God bless them, when you guys are making these decisions. You do have to have a corrective plan, really you do and yes, some things I could understand. We need good drinking water, but if there was a question asked of this gentleman, does the current budget cover essential items? If some of those things do not have to, um do not need any extra funding appropriated to it. I am saying do not, do not increase um the um. Do not, do not vote to increase this to the twenty three point seven, maybe something less. Cause we do need good drinking water for everyone, but we are strapped. Those of us who have, who are just, what do you, what do you call it, it's not, it's not middle income, we are just, we're the working class. I'm speaking for the working class, this is too much, it's too much. And you need to have a corrective plan and let us not come back here and then you're saying you have to increase it again for more, for another five percent. Or another twenty three percent, it's egregious to me, it's really upsetting.
I do have a question, hi, my name is Maya Byfield, six seven three Nicole Marie Street, Apopka, three two seven one two. About number one, the prior years, now how long is, how long has all these. Budgeted points been put into place, what if, was it just the twenty twenty four? Or has it been planned over ten years, five years, number one, number two. Uh the negative three million, I I really wanna know how long have we been in the negative? Or is it just, did it, was it just a rant, just negative three million this year? Or has, have we been negative one million last year, negative five hundred thousand the year before? Can I get some understanding on the timeframe of this?
Commissioner and mayor, my my name is Dear Dad Guru, I I listen to some of this concern. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, cause I'm gonna forget if I don't, okay, cause I think she was talking about the negative three million. And what was your other question? This has been like a two, three year period, uh with a lot of our capital projects, they roll over from year to year. So this is our FY twenty four budget, but it includes things that were rolled over from twenty two, twenty three as well. And some things that were approved in FY twenty four budget and amended in the FY twenty four budget, okay? In regards to the three million dollar projected deficit, that's where we are when we did the budget last year. And we took nine million dollars out of reserves, we had the same discussion about the rates. We knew then that we were gonna be updating our rate study because the rate study that we had did not factor everything in there properly. And it would probably be somewhat of a significant increase, we knew that then, we talked about that then. So let the decision was made to move forward with that budget as it is. Right now, we're at a point where we got to start making some major increases. And as regards to a corrective action plan, the rate study that we're doing is a five year rate study. Okay, so when I said that I got the amounts for FY twenty five and they came in at the forty percent, forty percent, fifteen percent. Okay, we didn't want that to continue, so that's why we are still revamping some of the stuff for the outer years. That's what's still underway, hopefully that answers your question.
Hi Commissioner and and Mayor, as I explained in the briefing. Most of these projects are nineteen point eighteen million dollars, are project that has to be done because of the following reasons. There, some of these parts has to be done because, and I will explain, because of to meet regulatory compliance. Secondly, we have to meet federal and state rules and regulations. And I will explain to you some of these projects where they fall under. And then we have infrastructure repaired due to impending failures, so let me address those for the public well water. We have a permit called a consumptive use permit. That was issued back, I think in twenty fifteen or twenty thirteen. Um uh yes, I think it's twenty thirteen and it expires um back in twenty thirty one, uh in twenty thirty one. One of the condition of that permit is, is that all ground water wells. Every every wells that we are withdrawing water for public water should be drilled to the lower aquifer. We have four of those wells that is still in the upper aquifer. And we on that permit told us that we should be having that done since twenty nineteen. It was not done, it was in the books, it was under study and evaluation, but through the funding. Um basically, we kicked the can down the road, right, we started design, we stopped. Because there were no consultant, then we come back in twenty two, twenty um twenty one, twenty two. We 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 continued the assessment, so basically right now, the plan was prepared, the specification was done. Right, we have sent out for a contractor, we bid the project out, the cost came in, we select well the contractor. And this project is coming to realization now, this this project will be constructed starting in January, we already have the contract. For those well, which is one are in Grosse and Barker. And we have three in, in Plymouth, original. Those two alone wells, right, is in the vicinity of close to $3 million.
So if I can, just while we're talking about that topic, those were all supposed to be done and were recommended to be completed in 2019?
Well, no, that, that is the consumptive use permit, right? Said that we should at least get it done right in 2019.
So, and anything pre-COVID would have saved us a substantial amount of money. But instead, we kicked it down the road. And that's one of the contributory factors of why we're here now, correct?
Right, yes. Because now we come to realization because one thing. First of all, before you can go ahead and, and construct these wells, you have to design it. You have to get a permit and, and have get a specification to put that job out to bid. That process take 18 months, right? What happened in 21, 22 because of funding for the design part? And there were no, no availability of, of the contract, of the consultant, because we have to rebid them, right?
But we had one already.
No, those were, you see, back in, when I joined in, in 21, right, in 21 here. That, those contract, the RFQ for the continuing consultant went out for bid. So at the end of that, of, of 21, sometime mid-range of, of, of 21, right? We then received, have four contractor on board. So then we continue with the project based on the funding we have, on the design part of the funding. Once the plan is, was completed, the specification was done, then we bid the project out. But in order to bid the project out, you need to have funding to construct this project. And so now that we selected, we have to budget it, as you heard it, Latin said. We have some money appropriated in 22, 20, in 21, 22, 22, 20 that roll over, right? But now that, when we bid the project out, the cost was much more than what the estimate came in because price went up, right?
So if we started this, because you had said it, we kicked the can down the road.
Right.
So that got us here. Again, it's similar to the, the last item was sanitation, just lack of planning. I'm not saying it was you, I'm just saying, lack of planning got us where we're at today.
Right. So all of these projects need to be done in order to meet, like, submit their regulatory compliance. The other one I want to bring, bring, bring forth here is the one for the Grosse and Barker Water Treatment Plant. This plant was built into 1985, right? This plant do, the tank, this, this tank really do have some, what you call it, compromised internal structure. The design started on this plan in 21, 22. It takes this amount of time in order to completely design, right? Because again, what I've already said, when, when this plan and specification was done, right? Is last year when funding was placed to bid the job out. If we do not replace this tank, right, and it fails, right? This is 45% of the capacity that we have. It has to be done because we can be in violation.
Well, I don't think the debate here is.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I understand, but the reason why I want to explain, because I told you, all these plan, because of the construction costs now, right? The design was something else. The construction cost to get this in, to realize, right? These are all construction funds, and these are big amount of money. That plant alone is, the Grosse and Barker Water Treatment Plant, you have here is 3.7, but the total amount is 4.5 million dollars. The rest money for that comes from 4.3 because it is an expansion. It's 1.5, it's 1 million gallon tank, right? So we expand it to 1.5, so that comes in. So in, in summary, I heard the question here, right? Which is good, good question was asked, how we get here? Well, we get here because they were planning in the past, right? Now you have to construct these things, you have to replace them. You have to replace the infrastructure now. Already it's gone. So you have to expend this amount of well money to do this. And as a result, money came out from reserve for one project here, I can just define. You, we have this project called Vic Road Water System Force Main well upgrade, 1.7 million dollars. This was in the making back in 21, 22. Something happened, the contractor didn't want to do this work as an emergency impala. I don't know, I would know what the reason. So we then went back and had to design to replace this ductile iron pipe. It is falling apart. You have to replace it. So we have the plan prepared, the specification out, we rebid the job. The cost came in close to, close to $800,000. We then had the contractor replacing the pipe. During the replacement of the pipe, when they were connecting to the, to the existing pipe in Ponkin, I think it was Vic and Ponkin Road, there was a blowout. The whole road was shut down, everybody knows. But we had to come in here and fix that blowout because those are wastewater, right? Their, their life and health and safety stuff. We didn't create it. This was the old infrastructure to create it. So then we spent another $800,000 to fix that area.
Well, let me ask you this, we spent reserves on that and now we're out of reserves.
Well, that come from the enterprise fund, the reserve.
Does this increase of 23.75 contribute back to any reserve building at all?
This.
Mr. Sherman's coming up. He should sit closer.
No, we're, we're.
Yes, okay. Yes, it does, 180 days. That's what we're, yeah, the rate consultant.
What do you mean by 180 days? And then let's get back to public comment. And I'm sorry, sir, for taking so much time.
Yes, 180 days of reserves is what is being trying to build in the new rate structure. Yes, sir.
Over the next.
Five years, because that's what he's planning out.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, deal. Sorry, here. You want the public comment? Virginia Street, 2119 Palm Vista Drive, Apopka. I am a retired grandmother of five grandchildren, four grandchildren that live with me. So you can imagine that $90 water bill is not what I look at every month, right? Two loads of clothes a day, four grandchildren that are very active. Just. And I know I'm not the average. But what I want to say is, I hope there is some type of mechanism to where I can have assistance when I need it. When there may be months where I may be short, where I can have some help. Because, you know, I can tell my grandkids only flush if you do number two. You know, I can tell them that. You know, I can't help the dirty clothes and that other stuff. But, you know, I just, I just hope that there, that you are considering programs that are going to be available for people that are in my situation. Okay? And all the grandkids are under the age of 11. So I'm not, I'm not always a happy person.
Good evening, Ottoman 1907, seven point loop. So last time we were here, we had, a, a number of people had a number of questions around the letter that was sent. And the first thing that really came out was a, in 2024, the City of Apopka completed a study of water. I believe somebody here asked the question of where is that study? And I believe Blanch can maybe answer that and speak to that a little bit more possibly, or someone else. Do we have that completed study at this point?
He's been providing information, which was an email, is what I stated. And I also said that the study is still underway. And it's underway because it's a five-year study. And we wanted to continue the study so that we don't have this large of an impact in the outer years. And we sent out that letter right there. Okay, did you get that?
No, no, I don't believe, I don't believe anybody received this. I know that we did not receive anything.
It was an email, oh, if you didn't have an email on file, you may not have gotten it. Well, it would not be an email. I'll check your email. And, but we did also post it on our website. Okay?
That's good. I'm glad to hear that we are, we are sending that out. And I can say, unfortunately, from a number of people that I've heard sitting around me, a gentleman sitting next to me, we did not know that that's being completed at that point. I have email on file, I know I do, and I did not receive this. The other thing that I think there's some confusion around is this increase. We talk a lot about the one-third of meters not working. But I don't believe that we see anywhere on this board or anywhere else line items that this increase is gonna directly affect and, and help improve the one-third that are not working.
I'm working my way up. Oh, I can get there, good. I'm sorry about the, the outburst there before. I just wonder what Jeff Chesick, 1121 Montegoel Circle, what, what year were we last above budget for the water?
That's kind of a moving target. I mean, if you put off the CIP, then I guess it's.
And I'm going here because we did do some trend analysis off the top of my head.
Get closer to the mic.
Yeah. So I would say, like, I know that in the 22, 23 budget, they use reserves to balance the budget. We use reserves in the 24 budget to balance it. So probably in the 21, 22, we still had some reserves going on at that time.
Okay, did, I thought you said earlier, we didn't use any reserves for the 24 budget.
Oh, no, general fund, no.
Not yet.
Not general.
Okay, not general fund. So you, so you did have reserves then available, alright? And governments that are responsible to its people have multi-year budgets. So that obviously the citizens can plan ahead for multi-year. What are you gonna be voting on? Is this a one-year budget? Which would just be considered a continuing resolution? I mean, you're, so you're, this, you're, you're not voting on something beyond this? Because what is the plan? I think Blanch has a plan already for multi-year. We're, we're leading these people on thinking you're, okay, good, we cut the 40% down to 23.7 this year. Next year, I believe they're still looking at 40. And the year after that might even be something similar to that. And the year after that, as you're trying to put together a five-year budget, might even be something similar to that. So, you know, where, where are we going with this budget? Is this just a carrot, we're dangling down to 20% for them instead of 40%? Because if, if that's the case, I mean, that's really not good business. How much revenue do we get from just the non-advalum taxes or fees from water over the last recent years? How, how much do we get usually, like recently, just from that?
From general fund?
Just, just from water fees, from that particular tax.
For the water, I have, let me go back here.
I don't know, was the revenue in there for just that?
This is revenue here for the fees. This is how we plan. That's an annual projection right there.
Okay, so about 14 million?
Twenty-four.
Oh, it's a 24, yeah. My, my glasses are right in the middle there.
We're both kind of blind.
Alright, so 24 million is what you took in. If we look at the impact fees, I don't know if all of you up there have the impact fees for the last five years in front of you. Back in 2020, we took in about 4.2 million in addition to the 24 there. In 2021, we took in 4.6. In 2022, we took in 5.2. 2023, we're ready at about 5 million. Year to date, 2024, we're looking at over 12 and a half million dollars already taken in impact fees. So if we were doing about 1,000 houses a month the last maybe two years, something happened in the beginning of 2024 to give us over 12 million dollars year to date, which will probably, with the things that you approved last month, probably get us up over, I don't know, 15 million? And then add that to the 24 million that we have coming in already from current customers? And then add the bills of those people, not just their impact fees that we brought in another 15 million into that revenue? We got a lot of money coming in. And we don't have a study that shows us how much money we actually need. There hasn't been one that was completed that shows us why we need to raise the funds based on current projections of revenue and of the impact fees. That's a huge chunk. That's three times more, just in, so far in 2024 of impact fees. So there's gotta be ways and places you can look at to take those impact fees and take out most of these things in here that we're looking at that are only gonna be there because we have that many additional people. Because if we have three times as many impact fees, that's a lot of additional people that we're gonna be serving with the City of Apopka. So there's gotta be some way, you know, to find out or figure out how we can move that money around to use it to take care of what we, what we need to use it for. And that's, you know, the biggest thing I just wanted to have everybody know out here is that this 23.7 ain't it. This is just the start of it. And unless we see what the five-year budget projections are, maybe we'll see that, you know, over the next three years, we're gonna be going up 120%. And that's not gonna be good. And I don't know, with the way we have impact fees, the way we're approving developments around here, we probably don't need to make this type of an increase if we can move our money around and spend it accordingly. Thank you.
They're here. I guess we can, I mean, let's just do it, I think we just do it. Just break forward, just do it now. Let's break forward now, just do it now. Yeah, let's just, let's get them in here and get them out. Any, any other public comment? We're gonna.
We got a couple.
Okay.
I just had one. A $2 million at the bottom of that list for miscellaneous improvements. Get a little bit of form of explanation of that, that $2 million.
What list are you talking about?
While he's looking.
This list here, other improvements? Okay, yeah, I do have the details. I don't have them with me, but I do have those details. Other improvements, 2.0 million.
Yes, Erica Mann, 977, seven point loop. My husband's previous question wasn't answered, and I was hoping we can get an answer on that regarding the meters and if any of these funds, because from what I'm seeing, I'm not seeing that in there unless it's falling under that other that she didn't have. Do we have an answer to that question?
So from my understanding, yes, there is money in the budget for, to correct the meters.
For what?
For the meters, for the meters.
For all of them?
Not all of them, but I know there is a, there has been some budget for the meters.
Okay, and do we have a count on that?
You would have to.
It's, yeah, what's the number and where's the line? Five, 5,000? No, that's, that's different. That's a different, yeah.
We discussed that in, actually, in mind.
The meters go in the inventory and then they just expense them as they put, they put them in. And the last P, you wanna, the last PO in the last year's budget, 24 budget, was about 1.9 million for pipes and meters. And they've spent all of that other than about 169,000.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The last PO that we issued to Core Made to purchase meters and pipes and everything like that, which these are inventory items, was 1.9 for FY '24. And they have spent all of that other than about 169,000.
So is that being rebudgeted again, another 1.9 to?
Yes.
Six the meters that are broken?
Yes.
But we don't know which ones they are. We don't know where they are.
No.
You have a list, you can send us all a list of the exact ones that are wrong.
You have work orders out there, yeah. You, you have this information. You have work orders out there. Yeah, you, you have this information.
So, so from my understanding, so it can be clear, there is a plan in place to do that, correct? Because I know we talked about it. So can you kind of review that plan? Because they actually do have a plan. I think it's important that they understand what the plan is.
Let me, um, but, but Commissioner, but let me explain how the meters funding is work. That one, I, I'm not sure if it's one point nine. My recollection is less than that in, in, well, in the budget, right? But I would go with Blanch system of one point nine. Um, some of those money, right, are expended for new meter installation. It's not only for the replacement of, of what, of, of the old, old meters. They're also, like this year, fifty percent of our budget that was in there is for new meter installation because those new subdivision that comes in, our staff is.
You mean all the new homes?
All the new homes, right.
So that's replacing the old ones.
Right. So that money is a combination for the new installation as well as, as to the replacement of the meters.
Did, I remember the, but during the budget, we did um cut the contractor who would be installing those water meters. Did we bring that back in?
There were no contractor that we had for water meter installation. What happened last year, we, we then for the first time have a contract, we piggyback on a contract. And we have a contract now on board as a piggyback contractor. I have the name here. Um, but we haven't used them yet. This is the first time that we have a contractor, right? Who can perform that installation, right, or replacement. This is the first time that we have one that can do that. We have never used them, but we do have them as a piggyback contract that was approved, if my recollection here, a few months ago.
So we do have a contractor that's.
No, right, that's correct.
We did not have it prior.
Prior, right, prior years.
Is that answer?
Yes and no. It kind of raised a little more. So if the year prior, we had one point nine that was allotted towards this, and we spent all that, but it hasn't been repaired, then how are we assured that what's being allotted towards it, this go around is going to repair it? Or the percentage that is being stated are going to be repaired? And what is that exact number?
Let me explain again what happened. The one point nine, I think, that Blanch was explaining, right, are the, are, are the money that we have spent for this year. My recollection about that, there were some in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We, we had a, a shortage of flex net and meters. So we did not expend all those, those money. Those, part of those money was roll over in, into, into this budget here. So we, for this budget year, we had what was budgeted for, it was, I think, one point two plus the roll over, right? We were able to expend fifty percent of those for meters that was installed in new subdivision. And fifty percent of those were replacement that we were performing. Now, in, in, in the proposed budget year that is coming, right? My recollection is one, at the same amount of money, we have one point two in there, right? For meters while replacement. This is the first time that we have a contractor on board. We haven't used a contractor yet. The question is, when you use the contractor to enhance, to increase the installation, the funding will, will be running out. You wouldn't have the sufficient funding. So I only have, say, for example, one point two million dollars to purchase well, the meters. From what my understanding of the contractor, for every meter he installed, he charged seventy dollars from his, from his contract that I reviewed. Right. So again, we can enhance the, well, the program, but more money has to be put in into the program because one point two, right, are only going to give you so much well, a meter, well, installation.
So let's back into some quick numbers here. One point two, fifty percent of that is going towards new meters for new builds. So six hundred thousand for that, six hundred thousand for broke and bad ones.
That's correct.
It costs seventy dollars for labor. What does the meter cost?
You divide, um, for example, half of that by three hundred, three hundred and seventy dollars, three seventy. Because you have the meter and the flex net.
So, okay.
So you're around to three seventy.
And that's inclusive, do I add another seventy on top of that?
No, no, three seventy.
So, okay.
And you will get about what, with three thousand meters?
I'm getting sixteen hundred.
Sixteen, right. And for, for the combined, I mean, sixteen to thirty-two.
Uh, yes, so for the new builds versus the ones.
That's correct. That's correct.
Basically, if we continue the funding that we're doing now, it's going to take us five years?
Right. So, so, so what I'm saying to you.
Five years to fix all the bad meters.
Yeah, right.
Assuming there's no new broken meters.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's the reality. That's the reality. That's the reality.
There's about six thousand that are malfunctioning from my understanding, or not reading or something along those lines. So it's going to be, take just under four years, if we do exactly what we're doing now, to just fix those ones.
Some of them are just flex net. It's, it's indicated on the work order.
Right. Okay.
Okay, makes sense.
Good, right, if, listen, I need to, I need to, we've got four students that are here that'd like to go ahead and we had them under the presentation under the regular um city council meeting. If we can just take just a break here for a minute and let Radley bring the, the students in and Dr. Jackson as well. I know you all are part of this. I'd like to get these, get these kids. So we're just going to jump over and Radley, thanks for being patient.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, Radley Williams Parks Recreation Director. Uh, tonight, uh, we wanted to bring some, uh, students in for some recognition and appreciation. Uh, earlier in the year, the city was awarded a National Endowment of the Arts grant for the Meats Bottom mural project, which is completing now. And I know you all were invited by the Historical Society for a unveiling event next Thursday at four o'clock. A component of this grant was to do some youth community outreach and um spur some art. Uh, we did receive four uh students that uh submitted artwork. It was on display in the city hall here back in April. Um, but we wanted to bring them in, uh, now that the grant's wrapping up, to give them some recognition and appreciation. Our first artist is Liliana Andrews, who submitted a piece of art, um, which was done with graphite. Can you come on down real quick? Next up, we had Leila Rushing, who submitted a painting. We had Constance Massengill, who uh presented us with a poem. And our final student was Christian Smith, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. Uh, he had a prior arrangement, but he uh submitted a a, a piece of art that was completed with colored pencils. So, uh, as I mentioned, they were on display back in April. Um, with the grant wrapping up, we wanted to make sure we brought them in for some official recognition. And uh, in addition to the certificate, we have uh fifty-dollar gift cards to Hobby Lobby to hopefully continue their art career uh and growth. So if we could get a picture with them, that would be awesome. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, thanks, Radley. Okay, back to water rates. Come on up. Sure. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so in the uh rough estimate numbers that you were given, Nick, based on those calculations, are we taking into account the potential inflation between now and then? Like, for example, the three seventy for this meter and the services? So if it's going to span over, over a four-year pa- plan, then with inflation, those meters could be five hundred dollars next year, six hundred dollars. So it's something to please consider.
Albert McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Our Public Works Department would have us believe that the biggest problem with uh effect to, to why we're behind is obsolescence. But in actual fact, there's three reasons that critical infrastructure in Apopka is who it is today. One is negligence, the failure to upkeep the work that should have been done, and the other's negligence. I'm going to admit negligence and neglect today, but we do have a serious problem. And there's residents here tonight who've hit the nail right on the head. What they've said is the problem isn't just balancing the budget this year. They have concerns that over the next five years, we're going to be faced with continuing inflation in the, in the, in the billing. And they're right, because the critical infrastructure in this city cannot be fixed in a year. It can't be fixed in two years. It's a five-year project minimum. And that is, our director of Public Works, uh, said is because sometimes a project takes three years to, to build and there's two years in the planning. And unfortunately, we are already behind where we should be in terms of sewage. I can only come back to the numbers uh our director gave us a few weeks ago, and I did my own study on it. Uh, if his numbers were right, which I doubt, because I was informed that there were, there were errors in them, we would run out of the ability to continue building in five years. And it's likely to be six years before we can actually start to, 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 to get to where we need to be with the bills. We've got all sorts of problems and there's no, there's no quick answer to them all. We really need to start now to look at why we're in the position we're in. And akin to a financial audit, we need an audit, an external audit done on the public services. We need someone to come in and look at the neglect on the lift stations, to look at individual lift stations and see. This could run for another year. It could run for two years, but it may break down next month. Because unless we know where we are with the critical infrastructure, we have a problem. In terms of pipes recently, I think the mayor said to us that, we'd lost federal funding. How much federal funded we lose? And why did we lose federal funded? It's highly unusual for money to be taken back once it's given for pipes that had to be replaced. There's all sorts of answers. I would like to have time to speak about. We're not going to have them tonight. But one thing I did learn last week is that for last two years, I've been suggesting that we have workshops. And Commissioner Nestor had a workshop in here last week. The decorum was exceptional. Everyone got a chance to talk. Everyone got a chance to listen. Ideas were put amongst each other, and this is why we will prosper as a city. If everyone invests in the ability to, to make it grow. But when we're shut down all the time, it doesn't do any good.
Anybody else?
Hi, Lionel Pollard, nineteen thirteen Centerland Point Loop. I had a question for the water and the meters. So currently, how do you go by with no contractors fixing and replacing and installing the meters? Done by staff. How, how efficient is it? How many do you get per, get done per month, per, per week? Don't have the number. Okay, so do you have the number on how many were done per year? At least last year, maybe? About, about thirty-eight hundred? Okay, so can you continue to do that at a yearly rate with, with your current budget? Instead of contracting out, can we continue to install or replace? And how many of those are installed? How many are replacements? Okay, so can you continue with the budget to continue to replace at that rate?
You, you need to, you need to come up with, like what Mr. Commissioner Nestor said, right? If you want it to be done in two years, you have to have more funding and use the contractor. If you want to, to use the exact resources we have, provide you don't have any vacancy or anything else, right? That program are going to have to continue within the next five to six years. So you take longer with the same funding.
Okay, so about, you said we're, we have about six thousand damaged.
Right, but, but. Right, six thousand, I don't know where the number came from, but it doesn't mean that all six thousand may be damaged meters. Maybe a flex net, which, 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 which would be something else, you know, it's a ridge with there that's not sending the transmission. But you have to, to inspect, get into the field and inspect each one of them. Then you may have meters in place, which is old meters, with what they call another, um, add-on to the meters that the two numbers then are reading it, right, to the, they're not transmitting the, the information to the, to the office. So it's not all of those six thousand. I don't know where that number came from, but not all of those six thousand will be meter replacement.
Okay, is there an audit team going out to?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do have that. Um, it's coming. We do have a program in place right now. We just met, we just and we, we have a, a schedule in which we, we start with various, um, steps in order, uh, to correct that, that, that program right now.
Okay, is there a place where we can get the schedule on the steps and?
Yeah, you can come and talk to me at, at Public Service. I walk you through.
Okay, alright, thank you.
One last question. The meters that you bought, do, do, do we have any warranties on these meters? The one, the six, on the six, uh, six. Okay, there's fifteen, fifteen-year warranty, so they went bad already. Out of the six thousand, how many are there still up on the warranty?
Those that, those, from my understanding, those that we purchased with warranty, right, because they have, so it's a proration. Say, for example, that went bad and it's around ten years, right? So basically, ten divided by fifteen, do you, you get the meter at a reduced cost.
Uh, so these meters went in in twenty-one, right?
Right, but it's like, it's like you have a battery in your car, right? It has a warranty.
Yeah.
So if you want the replacement of the battery, it's a proration you get for how much year you have used the battery. Right, so similar with the meter. If the meter was in the place for ten years, right? And we, it went bad, right? It has a warranty of fifteen years. Then we get a, we get a cut in the price, right, from what staff is indicating to me, right, for that meter.
Uh, uh, Commissioner Nestor asked about the, I think was the installment on the labor and I believe it was seventy dollars?
No, that cost what, what I mentioned to, to Nestor came from a contract price.
Okay, that's a contract price.
Right.
But he also asked, I believe, how much was the meter? And I think the meter was three hundred? If the meter was three hundred, what, uh, Commissioner Nestor asked, is that three hundred the pro rate of the, uh, warranty of the ten years that we already had?
Right, I understand your question. The meter doesn't work by just placing a meter in place.
No, 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 no.
No, no, you, no, no, right. So what I'm, what, what I'm telling you, the three hundred dollars I made is for the meter and for the something called a flex net. So the meter is in place. You have to connect it to a ridge or flex it to read whatever the information is transmitted. So the, the combine of the meter and the flex net is three hundred dollars.
Okay, so what I'm saying is this, what is the actual price of the meter that was installed in two thousand twenty-one that was the actual price of under the warranty? You understand what I'm saying?
I do. So the, the question's asking is, is the three hundred?
I do, so the question's asking is, is the 300 the new current price without any discounts? Or is there a discount already in that?
No.
That's, without any type of proration, that's new?
Nope.
So we don't, we don't have that number, is the answer. And then are we able to, and let me, is there anybody else from Public that wants to speak? Just wanna make sure I'm not interrupting them, I don't know why you're laughing. Is there any way that we can have developers?
Excuse me, I think you actually asked for the question. The question is there's a percentage, so if the meter is 10 years old, there's a percentage off, from my understanding correct?
Right, it's a proration, it's a proration of how long it is, right.
So the question was actually answered.
Right.
Okay.
This is a new question, thank you. The developers, are we able to have them install their own meters in their new homes and not take staff time for that? Is that a way to put it on them to do that?
I don't have an answer to that. I don't, you know, what, I don't know, have to follow up back on that. That's why we are continuing to do it, I don't know if there's a reason.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's an ordinance or anything else that preclude us, so I don't know, I can't answer that.
But it would be a decent idea if we could?
Right, right.
Okay. Mr. Sherman, this one's for you. We discussed last meeting to post the study that we had, in whatever form that looked like. So whatever information you provided the gentleman in the back, can we post that somewhere?
I can post the email on the website, yeah, Rob.
And I was, I was fairly sure that's what we had all discussed, but miscommunication, obviously. So can we make sure that that gets out? That's what multiple people have asked for, so they can review it as well.
On the website.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Alright. Well, let me just make sure to be understanding. Originally you said that we was gonna do a 40-40-10.
40-40-15.
40-40-15?
Yes.
Alright, so since we are now only doing a 23?
0.75.
0.75. What does next year and the next year look like?
That's what we're still working on, and that's why the study is not finalized. That's what we're still working on, what we have to do is revamp our CIP plan, because that's contributing to a lot of the rate increase. Like some of the major expansion projects that was included in the CIP plan, like some expansion facilities, about two or three expansion facilities and stuff like that. It was so heavy, as I mentioned, it came in with an annual debt service of $30 million.
So you're saying that those suspension plans are not necessary?
I didn't say they weren't necessary. I'm saying that they were contributing to the rate increase. We have to look at them differently and maybe in some outer years, and while we build reserves.
But also the expansion though, is also funded by impact fees.
Yeah, but even that could cover.
I know, I know, but, right. So like you take the wells, we just, so we've now finished, all of the wells now are down in the lower aquifer, so. You know, the, let's just take the one here on Grossenbacher. We took out, was it two or three?
One and two and did.
Right, so.
Anytime we can use impact fee funds, we do.
Right.
Any expansion component of any of those projects, we do.
So if you, you know, and one of the things that we have to go back to is when we, the wastewater plant, so we were under consent order by DEP, because we weren't meeting the nitrogen removal. So that goes back to, I don't know, 2014 is I think when we got the consent, 2015? Is when we got the consent order, so we had to put in a new wastewater plant. And the wastewater plant ended up being 62, 3, 4 million dollar plant. So those rates, and those rates just went online last year. So this is only our second year where the repayment of that 65 million dollar loan are now.
You pay about 4.7 each year out of the impact fee.
4.7 millions coming out of impact fees to pay for.
That expansion.
Just for the wastewater, new wastewater plant, so, you know. So if you look at the wells and, you know, we got, you know, we do have a lot of old infrastructure. We've got two, we got two lift stations that are at least 40 years old, maybe 50 years old, that need to be replaced. We've got, you take where we had the big, we had the leak in Arrow Estate, that, those condos out there, where, you know, we paid the lady's house, it got flooded. We had, that infrastructure's from the mid 70s. So there is a lot of old infrastructure that does, has to come out of the current rates. And if you go back, the homes that were built in 70s, there wasn't even an impact fee. So I don't know when we put impact fees into place, but they weren't even in place back in the day when a lot of this, the infrastructure that's going bad now was, you know, was built. So, I mean, it's a, you know, we'd love to be able to say we can do it for less. But, you know, we've also, we've also wasted some money along the way. We wasted $4 million on a fertilizer plant that we'll probably never use, I don't think we'll ever use. We wasted $11 million on the west plant that we'll never use. And we wasted $7 million on the Lush Road property. So if you take, you know, there you go, that's what, 18, 22 million dollars that we wasted. That doesn't include the water that we were, we were forced to buy from Orange County that we were dumping out on the ground. So, yeah, there's been a lot of, you know, there's, it just gives you some, some, some problems that we've had in the past that, you know, we're now having to grapple with, but. But none of these are new issues? Well, but if you have $22 million in the bank that you could spend on infrastructure, if you had it. And all of that came out of 401?
I was not here.
No kidding. Either way, it's money we could spend on either improvements or replacement, forensic audit.
Well, I guess my point is, if we don't do the 23.75 now, whatever we're looking at in the future, is gonna have to be greater than what the 23.5 is today.
Yeah, I would say yes. I mean, keep in mind, it was, what they recommended was 40. How we got to the 23 by cutting the budget.
Right, we cut the fat, we get to the 23.75.
Yes, sir. I think he closed.
We've already closed.
Closed the pub.
Yeah, I did, I asked if anybody else, and, go ahead, come on up.
Ace Woodham, y'all are getting ready to vote on up charging us at 23.7, and you don't even know what the increase is for. You don't know, like the gentleman sitting here in the back. You don't vote on this and charge us and not know if this will be enough to even resolve the issues? I can't believe that. The wastewater, y'all did it meant to go at 10% without a survey, without a study. And you get ready to do it again. And why are we voting for you? Unreal.
Anybody else? Last call, okay.
See, I wanna go to this slide that says, "Thank you." Okay.
What's that?
So I wanna go to the slide that says, "Thank you."
Okay, alright, so what's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Velazquez, you got any great ideas for us?
Well, why would you?
Well, I mean, you voted against the last one, so I just figured you might have a. So it's intimidation factor to ask you first.
It does sound a little sarcastic. That had nothing to do with this right now. No, we've massaged this over and over again. There are some issues in the budget that I feel that we.
The general fund.
That we can, right.
Yeah, but this is not general fund, but yes, and I'm aware.
I mean, this, this is as far, this is, as much as we were able to bring it down to.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Water is a necessity. And we have, we have nothing right now in the reserves.
Yes, that's basic.
I think the issue, I mean, the mayor keeps bringing up past projects, but he's been in office for six years, so for six years, he's known that these projects from before were failing. But that's neither here nor there, you know, when we keep saying about those last projects, we're kind of deflecting what the real issue is. And I think what most of our residents are asking is that what point did we realize we were running out of money? And then we've been in the last two years in deficit, but at some point, we should have realized we don't have enough money for some of these projects. And I think, I believe the young lady that did come up wanted to understand, because we have the list of the projects.
Yes, ma'am.
Was all these projects coming in on 24, but you did explain some of them are, were already approved.
Right.
And we're actively, are working on all these projects right now.
And I think the council has actually approved some of the contract awards as well. Yes, ma'am.
But to your point, Commissioner, $900,000 is for the next 18 years is based on those two projects, fertilizer plant and the wastewater, the west wastewater plant.
The fertilizer plant was Anovia. Am I, is that?
No.
It wasn't Anovia.
No.
I was not here.
So I'm just saying, so it's $900,000 of rate increases for the next 18 years is based on the fertilizer plant that we've not used and the west wastewater plant that we've not used and will never use. So.
One was built, I did ask Mr. Deal that this question. One of those wastewater plants was built as a secondary when we had a consent order for another one. Am I correct?
Yeah, from my understanding, we had the west plant. The west plant is a walk-up packing plant that was acquired back, if I recall from the reading of the literature, what I read, I was, you know, back, I think in 1960 something, right? And that plant was what we had. When, when that plant did not meet the regulatory requirement, a consent order was issued back in 2015. And that would create the east plant to be constructed, right? Once the east plant is constructed, they had spent some money to remediate the west plant. They just used it for a short time, and it's never used, because there were more work to be done on that plant, right? And maybe from what I read in the literature, they were no, they didn't want to spend the other excess funding to do it, knowing that in future, it would not meet the future requirement. So the plant was only used for a short period of time and never used, used again. And now, since it has not been used from, say, 2018 to now, you have pumps, you have a lot of stuff which has never been used. They are ineffective right now. The plant, the plant is just a white delegate.
Alright, well, I need to make a motion here, somebody. On the come board. Okay, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2024-23. We need a, we need a motion, one way or the other.
This is tied into the millage?
No, no.
Okay.
We need something here, folks.
Are there any other questions?
Somebody put something out there, we're.
Sorry, I'm hot.
We don't, we don't have time, this is it, we gotta, we gotta do something.
This is it.
This is it. Can, before they get riled up, I mean, it'd be great.
This is it.
This is it.
Okay.
You make a motion, Commissioner?
I'm gonna make the motion.
Thank you very much.
Motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Second by Commissioner Smith, all is in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries now.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up, Ten Millage, 4.6876, who's that? Right, is that you? Where are you going?
I was trying. As, as I explained now, when she reads that this has nothing to do, this is the millage, okay? And I'll explain it to you when they go through their process, okay?
So the millage has, is one component, and the budget is the next.
Yes, I'll explain to you the impact of the millage, what it is covering. Okay? But we got to get to that point.
You, are you going back over, or are we?
I was waiting on them to read it, they normally read, but if they don't, well, okay, well, let me go. Let's go with, this is to announce and adopt the tentative millage rate of 4.6876, which is 22.12% increase over the rollback weight of 3.83. 3.8384. And now this millage rate increase that we're doing from the 4.1676 to the 4.6876, as we discussed, will provide 1.7 million for the union salary. For the union salary. That is on the agenda tonight for that contract to be approved. And one point seven going into the streets budget that Commissioner Smith wanted. So that's gonna take us from the four point one. Six seven eight to the four point six eight seven six. Four point one eight seven six to the four point six eight seven six. I have to move.
Any, any questions for Blanche on the? The millage? No questions? Anybody from the public who should speak on this?
Rogers back at Seven West Main Street. Um, just kinda observing what has took place over this whole budget cycle. I just think it would behoove us if we start this process a little bit. Much, I guess give it more time, um, because you get into the point where you're making decisions. Based upon information getting in the meeting, I think it's kind of difficult um, to consider those type of decision making. So, you know, I just asked that moving forward that we give more time, um. You know, maybe we need to start this thing in May. You know, maybe even April, um, talking these points through because. We getting at the last minute and you got a lot of people that's coming up with a lot of great ideas. And suggestions and you kind of put against a, a hour clock to kind of get this thing done, where this need to be talked about thoroughly. Um, to hear people talk about how they've been affected by, you know, rate changes significant for some. Where some of it's not that big of a deal, but we really need to do a deep dive. Look at all the things that has been discussed. We've talked about um, auditing. Um, for example, the mayor's mentioned twenty two million dollars spent. So my question is if it was, why did those assets never be, who decided not to use those assets? So that's, that's a critical thing. If we spent twenty two million dollars, then we say we didn't use it. So basically, you basically, you wasted money. So then you have people wondering like, okay, so the things that you're proposing, what's gonna happen with that? So we have the retention plan that had a sinkhole. How much money did we spend on that? I guess it's nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to retrofit, then I heard in a meeting with that um. That Nick Hill, sorry Commissioner, Nest Hill, that, that you didn't put a pump. And that's what caused the issue. So. You know, here nor there, but we need to take a deep dive, slow the process down. And go through this stuff thoroughly so we don't get to the point where embarrassing ourselves. I felt embarrassed for you guys just to make a decision on a vote. Because guess what? You're elected to make that decision. And to kind of sit here and look at you guys, y'all. It, it was embarrassing for me to just look at you guys do that this morning, but that's my take on it, um. Cause it just, you kind of leave your head scratching here, cause for example, is there a risk assessment? Done on the decisions that you make? Like is there a department that look at deep down how those things come up to? So we won't get to this point? So, a lot of what I hear is basically understaffing. Not having the proper tools to do what your job need to be done. And it's called to us, keeping the millage rate low for too long. It was a good talking point, but now we get to this point like you got egg on your face. So, you know, I'm just saying for you guys to make a better decision next year. I just think you need to do a deeper dive to kind of get to, to conclusion in the backdrop on a lot of these decisions that you make. Thank you.
And Blanche, if you keep the um, bef- when, when they get done, if you'll have the, the dates where we've had. Oh, okay. So that'll be. In the regular, regular council. Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, alright, would you, yeah, yes ma'am.
Yes, hello, Eric Mann, nineteen oh seven San Juan Point Loop. I'm so sorry Blanche, it was impossible to hear you a bit ago because the mic was so far away and that's all why we were going what? So your original question was, do we have questions for? Either repeat or maybe if someone can summarize what it was she was just talking about, but us back here, we couldn't hear or understand anything. So if we can learn even what the subject is that we're talking about right now, that'd be awesome.
The current subject is about the millage rate. Um, and I'll go back through that. Here's the. The different workshops that we had. We started our workshops actually early. It's usually at the end of July, but we started it July ninth, tenth and eleventh. Um, special council meeting, additional workshop on the twenty eighth. Another council meeting on the fourth and sent our notification on, um, dated the ninth and we're here today. So it's been several meetings, if that's what you were trying to get me to answer. Okay, but the current subject. Uh, is pertaining to. The actual millage rate that we need to set, the tentative millage rate. And we're proposing to set that at four point six eight seven six, which is a twenty two point one two percent increase. Over a rollback rate of three point eight three eight four. And that's been talked about in the workshops and the um, budget meetings and everything as well. The increase is primarily related to adding one point seven for the union contract and one point seven to go into the streets. For additional road improvements.
Alright, anybody else want to speak on?
Sylvester Hall, real quick, the, the equipment that was bought before. It all came to city council and we voted on it and we agreed to buy the equipment. Somehow. The equipment that you brought up, what, total of about what, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen million dollars? Okay, once we find out the equipment was no longer any use to us. I mean, can we sell it? Can we auction it off? Can we, can we do something to recoup some of our funds? Because the longer we let it sit there not being used, it's just deteriorating, deteriorating and depreciating at the same time. So we acknowledge all this loss that we have lost. But nobody has the common sense to say, hey, look, let's try to salvage as much as we can to get back some of the money. Those are the kind of things when we hear that. It, it's just, it's just mind boggling. And to see, to sit here and hear meeting after meeting for almost three years now, so that's why y'all hear my voice, the frustration because. This is not nothing new. This is what we've been going through for almost, since I've been coming for three years and I only missed five meetings in three years. But. Do we have a plan of action to recoup some of that money? Because now we know it's out there. And one of the things, uh. I want to echo what uh, uh Rogers was saying. We need to come up, you know, do this a little bit more time, but if you look at the process, the way the city council works. Uh, the package come out what on Friday? Your commissioners, you get together maybe Monday or Tuesday to deep dive in it. Sometimes it's eight hundred. Sometimes it's five hundred pages. So how effective can you, can you do that? When you only have a certain amount of time to look at stuff, then come here and make an educated decision on what's gonna be best. For the city of Apopka. I, I, it, it's just, it's just frustrating. And so. At some point. Where, where do we change? Where, where we bring about change? Because once, once we walk out of here, okay, it's overweight to the next two weeks and then we come back in here, we do the same dog and punish you again. And then when you ask for public workers, so you can hold people accountable for things that are not being done. It's, it's mind boggling. Now the lift station, the last two years ago, maybe we, we had a budget meeting. And somebody brought up the lift station and I asked the question, how many lift stations do we have? And then somebody said roughly a hundred and thirty now, a hundred and forty. Well, if you know like I do with maintenance, that's a lot of lift stations. What is conditioned to all those lift stations? Is the maintenance being done on those lift stations so we can prolong the efficiency and, and the lifespan? But these things just be brought up and then when you have the residents come and try to give you guys. Constructed advice and resources on what to do. It's met with hostility. You put us at the end of the meeting, you cut off our feed, you don't want people to listen to us, you want, don't want people to hear it. Now all you can make that motion to bring public comments back to his original state. I want to see who has, who has the balls to do it. Thank you.
Uh, Altamand, uh, nineteen oh seven San Juan Point Loop. Uh, I'm just gonna read this straight from Spectrum News. And I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but if you just type in Apopka, city millage rate, you'll find something from July. And it talks about how. We're increasing this by, this millage rate by about point two five and now we, I see that we've dropped it down a little bit. But the, the thing what I'm, the, the overall aspect that I'm seeing here is you go to a fast food chain. You expect to get nickel and dimed. You go maybe. To amusement park, you expect to get nickel and dimed and now we're getting nickel and dimed in our own house. You see this here, for example, three hundred thousand dollar home two years ago pays twenty nine dollars. Uh, with this increase, we're gonna see nearly triple that. And they just continue to feel like every way we can scrape money from the citizens of Apopka. All we are doing is just finding that little bit. And I see that this is gonna generate one point seven million. Of course, we want us all here to see Apopka grow, continue to grow. But when. We see money being wasted in other aspects. Um. In terms of. In terms of uh, city employees is what I will say. It's, it's frustrating to say the least to see that we implement these ways to. To generate revenue when there are substantially better options. I think a gentleman just said, we have many intelligent, smart people. Here that work for the city, uh, work, sorry, live in the city, but work for similar environments and can. Help you all make better and more informed decisions. And it feels like bluntly, we are talking up against a brick wall.
On that seventeen or eighteen million dollars that was wasted in the past. Um, administrations. A lot of that was grant, granted material. And it was part of different packages. So it's the statement of we, the past administrations. Setting us up for a loss of eighteen million dollars in, in uh, equipment stuff is misleading. That's not the true facts. So it needs to be addressed that way. The Gross and Barker issue is something that the state required us on. You know, wherever you went, if I'm not mistaken, four years ago that they weren't, our wells were not deep enough. We knew that then. Did we plan for the cost of that construction? No. We got a one point eight million dollar grant for the federal government for the northwest. Water treatment plant. Did we use it for that? Five years ago? No. We use it to balance the budget. So now we sit here for our hands up our ass, try to figure out how we're gonna take care of our treatment plants. Just to. I'm telling you, the problem starts right here. And I think our commissioners, most of you are being misled. And I think you need to start looking deeper into the issues. That we are facing, the city is facing. Before we go and vote. Y'all just increased the taxpayers today. Thirty five percent. On our bills with y'all. Thirty five percent. Every citizen of Apopka know. Thank you. Without knowing where that money is even gonna wanna go. Or what it's gonna be used for. How's it gonna fix, fix the issues that we've got? No clue, but y'all, we gonna pay for it. And then you want to go up on the millage rate. I can understand the millage rate. I don't have an issue with that. But for pub, for services? It's ridiculous. Please, please look before you go on with this stuff, before you vote on it. Don't be misled. There's other pages to, y'all getting in your messages.
Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, first of all, the, the time and effort that goes into the budget process is unbelievable and I appreciate everything everyone's done. But I've sat through every session, I've only missed one through this program and I missed, I got most of them last year. Uh, I really question the whole accuracy of the budget. When you look at our lack of infrastructure, it was demonstrated by Golden Gem Pond. The condition of roads and sidewalks, the CRA, we had to get an extension. Millage rate increase is primarily based on deferred maintenance. Uh, our, our um, utility increase based on deferred maintenance. We just aren't doing our job and the first three budget meetings, I asked every department head and only three could answer affirmatively. If they had the people, the supplies, materials and equipment they needed. That's sad, right out of the box. We don't, we need to have our people, the, people gotta have the tools and they gotta be held accountable. Uh, we don't have monthly financials. Anyone in the business world, every month you go over financials, anything ten percent over budget? Anything ten percent under budget, you had to explain to your boss why and more importantly, the plan to get it right. We don't do that. I verified with the previous manager, I've not talked to Jacob about this, but we don't have financial reviews. They get a paper. What's paper without having, having some meat behind it? Um. Oviedo just passed. More fees onto the developers. They call it a mobility fee to address streets, sidewalks and so forth. We oughta be doing this kind of stuff. We have to count for what we're looking for. The, the basic summary, I hate to say this because I know the time and effort goes into it, but an old boss of mine said something. You know, when you got a problem with the budget, when you have to move money every month. It's called the old adage, garbage in, garbage out. We gotta do better. This goes well past this administration and historically, but we gotta draw the line in the sand. And start all, start over and start doing it right. Thank you.
Albert McKimby, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. I said earlier on, there was three reasons why our infrastructure was in a poor condition. I mentioned one of them was negligence. How did we get to that position of negligence? Well, it's because of policy. And this administration continuously makes bad policy. I'll give you an example. We're currently short of water. We're having to buy water from everywhere because our infrastructure, we can't, we can't contain it ourselves. Not only that, we were contracted to take water from Altamont. Altamont flooded last week. I don't know what that ultimate is gonna mean to the city of Apopka, but again, it's always policy. We're always trying to get ahead of the field and make smart moves and we get caught with our trousers down every time. So, let's look at Lust Road. Lust Road should have been capable of producing three million dol- uh, three million gallons of reclaimed water per day. Out of Lake Apopka. So even when there was a drought, Lake Apopka was never gonna run short of water. We would always have had. Three million do- uh, three million gallons per day of reclaimed water out of there that we could have sold. But who made the decision that we didn't need it? Because we were gonna take water from Altamont Springs and take water from other municipalities. And that, that, let that place go to ruin. Now it will never come back online and we lost the potential for three million gallons of water revenue every day. Same thing happened at Jason Dwelling. You now know that you're gonna probably have to spend seven million dollars on Jason Dwelling. To put in new pumps and get recirculation in there. Why did that happen? It happened because it was the neglect during this administration, because of the same bad policy. We thought we could take water from somewhere else, we wouldn't need to do anything with ourself. Same now in Golden Gem Road and unfortunately, I had a look at that and it gets worse every day. Every day I look at it, we fly drones over it and the condition deteriorates. There's more volcanoes, I don't call it volcanoes, but there's seven new ones out. The liners that were there, which I thought could be salvaged, are now not salvageable. And we're not gonna get any money from uh, from St. John's to repair those or replace them. So we have problems and it's negligence and neglect. So let's forget all about obsolescence. Let's address the situation, let's make better policies and one of the policies needs to be. That we need someone to come in now and look at our critical infrastructure. It needs to be someone from outside. Because I have no more trust for the integrity and the ability of our public works department than fly in the flipping air. Anybody else?
Alright, any final? Okay. Okay, come on down.
Just had a comment or concern about the. Comment. About the, um, what do we have? Twelve million dollars? Or so in impact fees this year for the water and wastewater stuff. That means for. police and fire, we also have impact fees for them for new construction of things.
Right.
That also means that that tripled amount of impact fees that we have, all those units that are three times more than what we had the last five years. All of those units are brand new, high-dollar um facilities. That's a huge amount of money that's gonna come in in our budget through these um through the millage. Probably more than half of what we're taking in from the whole city right now. So do you really need to increase this thing, the millage, by twenty-two percent? Knowing that next year, when all of those impact feed buildings um actually are full and paying their millage, you're gonna have half again as much as the thirty-six million dollars that you have or thirty-two million dollars that you have right now coming in in millage? That's gonna be a whole nother like sixteen million dollars you're getting in just in the millage fees. That could easily cover the one point seven percent for the union contracts and the other one point seven percent um plus whatever other money you have coming in. I mean, we're not forward-thinking at all, thinking that, wow, I just approved all of these buildings. I just took in about fifteen million extra dollars. And within so many months, all of those people are gonna be paying a millage fee to the city of Apopka, and we have all that money to spend. So something to consider when you're thinking about that much of an increase. And also, what what is the percentage that the the firefighters agree to um for the contract for their raises? Does Blanche have that information? No, it's not. Do you guys know what it was? Okay, awesome. Very fair. Very fair. Keep in mind, we we you got a lot of money coming in through this millage, through all this extra, you know, building that we have going on there that's actually worth a lot more than um a lot of the the facilities that we have in the city right now.
My name is Samuel Anderson. I'm a resident at one twenty-six Lancer Road Drive. My wife and I have lived here since nineteen eighty-four. My wife and I, when we moved here, Apopka didn't have a billing department. She started billing and pl- billing department. She worked for the city for thirty years. I worked for the city for fifteen in public services sanitation. We've seen the growth in this city. It has been suggested that you table this, don't want to vote because you're miserably unprepared to do a vote. You're not prepared, and I would suggest, it had been suggested, that you bring out an outside auditor to help you get things together because this is not a mom and pop operation anymore, as we saw it. So we need somebody to come in and look at this situation and help you. Help you look at the situation, which means you'll have to humble yourself, humble yourself, listen prayerfully to the community at large, and then let's make a wise decision that would be a blessing to this city. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. All right.
For those who are like me, who are just learning some things, I have in front of me the twenty twenty-four real estate. So I wanna thank Ms. Sherman for kinda educating me how this works. So if you look on your form, it tells you what your tax rate was for this year. It's three point eight three eight four, and it was going to be their proposed budget change for this year was four point eight three nine nine, and what she informed me is not gonna be as high as it states here. It's gonna be four point six, so I'm grateful for that. However, I sat here, you all approved the ten percent for the sanitation workers who I care about deeply, even though I really didn't feel we, you know, at this point in in Earth's history where we're all strug- not all, but a lot of us are struggling, but you approved it. Then you have also approved the twenty-three point seventy-five percent, which some of us don't know how we're gonna manage. And so I'm coming back again, especially for those people who couldn't be here this this evening, to say don't don't approve any, don't 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 approve any more um increases. We are still, some of us are still trying to figure out how we're gonna make it um to next year this time with what you're doing. I know your job is extremely challenging. I took a political science class, and I remember how difficult it was when you just have so s- just just this little pot of money, and you have all these things that you have to appropriate it to. Some things have to be left behind, and some things you have to prioritize. But we also, there are people who have said here, if you don't have all the knowledge to make certain decisions, it's okay. None of us has is all-knowing, but there's other people in the community that we need to tap into to say, hey, how can we bring more revenue into the city of Apopka so that we won't have to tax these people out of their homes and end up having them go to Georgia like a whole bunch of people are doing right now because taxes are so low over there. I think the governor gave back, if I'm if my dad, if if I'm not mistaken, my dad said the governor gave them back money. So it's okay that you don't know everything, but we can't keep coming here, and then every time we come, it's you're just voting on an increase. That's not sustainable for a lot of us. So please, if you don't have all the answers, know it's okay, but tap into the knowledge base of other people who do. They can learn something from you. You can learn something from them, but for just just okay, let's do an increase. Let's just do an increase. This is gonna impact a lot of people severely, and I just want you guys to consider this.
Ian Kimble, twenty-eight sixty-three, Park Meadow Drive, Magnolia Park Estates. Uh I'm not quite sure. I'm not fully educated. I'm humble enough to admit that as far as how this millage rate applies to me. I know that when I got that same form she's looking at, and I looked at the increase of what my property tax is gonna be next year, I was a little taken back. Um I don't know if you know where Magnolia Park Estates is located at. Uh but just so you know, that little circle between Koyapaka Road, Benyon Road, and Boy Scout Road and back. I believe I just counted in my head, there's approximately five to six apartment complexes going up. Multi-family, multi-family home buildings. I can't even imagine how many units there are in each one of those buildings. I can't imagine how many vehicle operators are gonna be coming out of those complexes. However, what I'm looking at is my roads are still two lanes. Do you know how long it takes me to get out of my complex? Because the four twenty-nine is being torn up right there for two years, making improvements, which I gladly appreciate. However, the road that goes from Okoyapaka Road all the way down because they put a red light at McCormick without a turn lane. So if somebody wants to turn left on McCormick, they have now blocked up traffic all the way to my community pass Benyon. It is absolutely appalling what I have to go through just to get out of my neighborhood. So all these rate increases in sewer, water, trash, property taxes. When you guys gonna start fixing these roads, these potholes? When you guys gonna start widening and making advanced decisions rather than waiting till the problem is already here and it's gridlocked to get out of a two-mile radius, if that? I mean, south of Apopka is blowing up, as is north of Apopka on the four twenty-nine, like I say. Every time I go to Daytona, I get sick in my stomach looking at how you've raped the net landscape. Just gone in and just leveled everything and made big buildings, and you sat here and approved permit after permit after permit last week. Okay, and here we are again wondering, what are we gonna do? We need more money. How are we gonna get more money? Well, to me, the math doesn't add up. Again, I didn't go to political science, but with all the people that are coming to Apopka, what is the necessary purpose in raising our rates on every single thing? Again, I'm fortunate enough to pay my water bill, but I wanna see my road starting to get widened and be prepared for the mass migration of people that are coming to this community. It's unacceptable to have a two-lane road with five apartment complexes on it. How many thousands of people are gonna be transporting themselves day in and day out, at at work time, school time, and coming home? It doesn't make sense. I don't mind making a little or paying a little bit more money if I know my money is gonna go to improve the things that need to be improved rather than waste. You know, it's just ridiculous. You guys widen the road, Okoyapaka Road, right in front of the nice, beautiful, big commercial warehouses you built. But what about the people who are trying to get to and from work on the smaller backroads, Benyon Road? How many communities did you guys approve on Benyon Road? And you talked about this facility on Lust Road, that that's a waste, whatever that building is, that the, believe the entrance of the Wildlife Drive you guys are talking about? It's my understanding, and I don't know if anybody else knows this, but Ms. Moore wants to turn that into a homeless shelter. And if you wanna talk to her, she'll be at Coffee and Whatever up the street tomorrow, I believe. But to put a migrant, excuse me, a homeless shelter at the end or entrance of a nature preserve is astonishing. And right slap dad in the middle of a community that you guys just approved, uh two neighborhoods, Benyon Reserve, the other one, the big community in the back that's all rentals, by the way, that's probably owned by investment firms, who's renting the whole community out. Think about it, people.
Anybody else? Okay, close the public hearing? Blanche?
Thank you very much. As explained, you know, this requires a unanimous vote. And uh the rate that she mentioned that went out on the trim notice was the one we set at the four point eight three nine nine. So I I shared with the young lady here that it's down to the four point six eight seven six, and it relates to the one point seven for the union increases and one point seven for streets and road improvements.
Any final thoughts? Are we gonna discuss, is this where we discuss? Just ensuring that the line items that we already went through?
That's the next thing. That's the next item.
Won't this be the time to do it, though? If we're discussing how much we're gonna budget, won't we discuss?
It's in the tentative budget. The other line items that we went through was all impacting reserves, not the millage rate. So I ha- I have it on the next item, but it's
Doesn't the millage rate impact the reserves?
Not necessarily. If you don't want to use the increase the millage rate, then of course you ex- you can exhaust.
I mean, I guess the point is the conversation go hand in hand.
Could. Well, I mean, we did do the workshops with them hand in hand, but at this point, we designated that these funds are for those particular purposes.
So all those funds?
Remember, you added the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand to make it a smooth two million for the year?
Right.
With the one point seven, that's in the other side. That that comes out of reserves, kinda being offset by it, those savings that came out of the pension fund. Adjustment.
So can we have that discussion now, though?
You can, if that's what you'd like. I'm trying. Let me see. Rob, do you have my other presentation for number two? Can I pull that up? No, no, no. It's on this item. It's this shot. This, the public hearing, it's just the second item. Uh regarding the tentative budget. Oh, God. No, I thought I sent.
I only have what you provide me at this point.
I sent it to, I thought I did. To um you, you know, it's out there for the um the one, the meeting we had on the um fourth. You can pull it up from there. It's the same presentation.
Why is it looking for that? Let me let me ask you a question. Uh did we not receive um from the county what funding we will receive from them at an estimate as to what the military rate will be that?
Estimate as to
That they charge our residents?
Right.
Yeah, it's, well, you know, the 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 total tax bill has what the city charges, but also what the county charges for their services within the city.
Within the city.
I think it's it's like four point oh something.
Right, because that yeah, I I'm I'm assuming that when they sent us those numbers, that they've already taken in account that we're gonna have some some growth, and that's already estimated in that amount or no?
We don't get any of that money. That that county money stays in the county. Now, they, I I would, I would argue whether we get our money's worth from the county, but like um uh you've got animal control, mosquito control, um planning, uh so there's those things, even though city residents are paying the the county tax, that goes to the county, which for the services that are countywide. Metro Plan Links would be another one, um Sun Rail, those those programs that are county programs could use the money that we send them. Does that make sense? I hope I'm explaining myself.
That does, and and I understand that we don't get that money, but I thought when we began the budget process, before we began, that we have some number that we're looking at as to what estimated revenue is going to be. Right.
For for our, just our side?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, right. So that's what I'm saying. So that number, does it not include or give us an estimate of what the growth might be?
Yeah.
By determining that figure?
They they tell us what it's gonna be.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So I just wanna make sure I resonate, understand that 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 that's already taken into account, but that's what they alluded to earlier, that we're gonna have this growth. So there's gonna be all this additional money that we are no- don't know about, but in fact, we do because they've given us an estimate.
And it doesn't, right, it doesn't go.
As what that growth is going to be.
Now, the two things that we we will get, um but one for sure, we get some property tax from Orange County for our, the the fire district, the station twenty-nine. We took that over from the county. We get that property tax. Now, one of the things I've asked our chief to 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 go out and and find out, the Or- Orange County just raised their fire fee by a hundred and fifty dollars a house. And so if we were to, you know, and we should get that money because we're taking care of those tho- those folks. So if you take the hundred and fifty dollars per per house, I think we came out to be a little less than five hundred thousand dollars that we should be getting additional from the county. So that's not accounted for, so I have it.
Right.
But but I I think I don't know why we we shouldn't get that money. So um I think Will, do you know how much we get from the, from Orange County for the Fire Station Twenty-Nine district area? Half a million. So.
You're going back to? And that was uh nine four, September fourth?
Your your mic isn't on there.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, I apologize. Bringing that up to two million dollars, that's from the one point seven, and that two hundred and eighty-nine one fifty-three makes it a even two million dollars for the firefighters' union contract.
And so Will, that but because of the contract? Do we know what the cost of the current contract is?
Uh I'm thinking it's very close to that amount, sir. Mm-hmm, as of my understanding. So um these are the details um that we went through and discussed, and and basically, we, you know, had a consensus as far as we could. And overall, this is the general fund budget by division, the mayor's budget on down to our transfers coming to that one hundred four, one hundred million, four hundred and seventy thousand, four fifty. And then going into the millage rate here, just so you can see the four point four three seven six, four point six eight seven six, and the four point eight three nine nine. And we set it at the four point eight three nine nine at that time, not knowing where we're gonna end up with the union. And we're proposing the four point six eight seven six at this point in time. And again, the purpose of the four point six eight seven six is one point seven for the union contract and one point And again, the purpose of the four point six eight seven six is one point seven for the union contract and one point seven to go into the streets fund. And going into the streets fund, this is how we plan to use it, going below here, five hundred thousand, increasing that for maintenance of sidewalks and curb repairs. Paving and resurfing program, another one point two, and the pension savings, I just put it in the paving and service program, resurfacing program. Okay? And we talked about wastewater. Go back. Here. Mama.
Okay, any other thoughts for we?
Is, has there been any changes to any of the discussions that we had and we all agreed to on that?
There hasn't been any changes. I mean, there have been some additional comments and, and concerns, but there haven't been any changes.
Okay, so there's no changes, though?
No, sir. Not since we met that on eight twenty-eight when we went through everything.
Okay. I guess to the council, are there any additional changes we're gonna make to this?
As a part of the tentative budget discussion.
I understand.
Not the mileage rate.
And, and I don't have any tentative changes, but I, I do have a, a question that I'd like for you to consider. Is that. There are other utilities that provides, uh. Funding for their customers in case of there's prices or something to assist them, uh, with their billing. Uh, just something to think about is how could we also implement that same kind of a program? Uh, for our residents. I know we allow them to pay, make their payments in, in increments if they can't pay the whole bill at one time. But I know that there are other utilities that actually have like small grants and things that actually helps them with the payment of the bills.
Okay, and we can talk about that.
Lake Apapka, I was reading about Lake Apapka Natural Gas, how they have a fund that, um. That helps their, it, it's an assistance for their customers because they feel that it's important that their customer has the gas for hot water. And that their customers have gas for cooking. Um, so it's a program that they, um, I, I read the whole article. It's been successful. And that was something that I was considering, um, and switching off on some. We, we budgeted some money for grants. And, uh, I did, yesterday I did, uh, ask our city clerk. Cause I asked her, how many customers do we cut off their water on a monthly basis? And I was very surprised by the high number. And I felt that the money that we were proposing to put on the side for, um. For grants that we could establish an account with that money that we have designated. To really address the utility and water, uh, department because water is a necessity. And I just was so surprised to learn how many customers were without water. And, and that should not be occurring.
I, I think, I know, I know the county has a program. I wanna say it's called Liheat.
So, actually, we did a lot of research on this, and this is something I wanted to, wanted to, to present. So I've been for the past few weeks, understanding, hearing everyone's concern in regards to some type of funding to assist. So Lake County has, Lake County Community Actions, um, has a program. Um, and then you have the Orange County, one second, Orange County for the Community Action, Community Action Division. Uh, one of the things in Liheat is part of that, so they receive funding. So what they have is they have the community action agencies, and within those community action agencies, um, they receive community, uh, block grant, services grant. And part of those funds, they are able to assist with that bridge with if someone lights it turned off. So what I'm thinking, and it's something that I actually wanted to bring to the council, we can discuss, how can we implement something like that here? And I am in communications and meetings with different municipalities and agencies to see exactly how we can bring something like that here to Apapka. But I definitely have done, done a deep, deep dive, and there are some funds out there available, but we just have to kinda go, go out to those funds. And also meet with other agency to see how we can partner, partner to do that. So I think it's something that we can. Well, it's not, so it's not, so the community block grant is.
That's federal.
That's federal money.
Yeah, yeah.
So these other agencies already receive some of that money already. So we need to figure out how to partner with these agencies to figure out how we can bring these services here.
Yeah, I think there's, there's, county has dollars, I don't know why we couldn't. Draw down their, the county dollars under the Liheat program for city residents.
It was eight hundred thousand. I think it was eight hundred thousand that was given last year. I, I have the numbers written somewhere, so it was eight hundred thousand. But I think it's more so of just communication and just communication partnerships to let them know that we are interested in receiving some of those funds are what a referral process looks like.
And I'm sure they've got a process that you have to meet, but we, yeah, we can definitely, that'd be something we can, we can take a look at.
Absolutely.
And then have we budgeted at all or are planning on budgeting for, um. A charter review or charter amendments? We plan on budgeting for that?
Oh, that, yeah, that was a question.
It's not in the budget.
I think that y'all mentioned something about one more. It's not on there.
No, it was me.
Oh.
Um, adding something within Susan's budget, I think, in case we had to do something. Am I misunderstanding? Yeah.
Did that already happen? Are you saying that you already added that?
I don't think it was added, but I, how much you estimate that to be?
Seven, one, seven, seven thousand? Seven, ten.
Ten, so, yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay. I thought la- I thought it was closer to like fifty thousand last time we spoke about it, so to have a special election. Wow, okay.
All right. So we're back to.
The mileage at the four point six eight.
Which has to be a unanimous vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to confirm, it has to be unanimous twice. Now we in next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any other last thoughts? Now, I'll look for a motion to approve, and then I've gotta read the, the script here, but. Look for a motion to approve the tentative mileage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five at four point six eight seven six.
So, so move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Let me read this. In accordance with the, the truth and mileage trim compliance requirements as set forth in chapter two hundred of Florida statutes. The city must set the proposed mileage rate and advise the property appraiser of the tentative rate, rollback rate, date, time, and place of the tenant budget hearings. The tentative mileage rate is hereby set at four point six eight seven six, which represents a twenty-two point one two percent increase. Over the rollback mileage rate of three point eight three eight four. A mill is the tax rate for each one thousand dollars of taxable property value.
Correct. Thank you.
Am I good there?
Yep.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next up, um, need to adopt the tentative budget and adjustments resulting from the public hearing.
Correct. So I just kinda went through the presentation a little bit, so I don't know if there's any additional questions. This is the tentative budget. Total, yeah, two hundred and one million, seven ten, seven ninety-nine.
Any questions? Anybody from the public wanna speak on this one?
Oh, no. Hell, you.
Kyle Becker, one sixty-eight, Seville Chase Drive, Winter Springs, Florida. I just wanted to come. I was watching on YouTube at my house, um, saw their proceedings earlier. And I felt compelled to come down here all the way from Winter Springs to set the record straight. Um, there was a spending or expenditure for the wastewater treatment plant expansion back in twenty fifteen, I think was when it was approved. Um, it came to the mayor's point via consent order, meaning we didn't have an option. You do the expansion and you do it correctly per the requirements. The expenditure was sixty million dollars, but it was inclusive of the things that he's mentioning. He talks about the fertilizer plant. It's a bio so- solids dryer, is what that is. The three million gallon, uh, three million gallons per day former wastewater treatment plant was part of that expenditure. To make sure that you were doing it with two thousand sixteen dollars versus waiting until it's needed, which is today, based off of the expansion needed today. And we all know that it's much more expensive to do things tomorrow than it is to do today. So retrofitting, retrofitting the three million gallons, doing the expansion to the five million gallons to get this to eight million gallons, plus this bio hazard, or the bio dryer. Or biosolage dryer, that's what got us to the sixty million dollar expenditure. It's not money that was sitting in our accounts. The city got a basically no-cost loan, almost zero percent loan, to finance that debt, to make that critical infrastructure project. So to sit up here and represent that it was additive to it, that unnecessary spending is a complete farce. It was necessary spending, and it was done at a point where you were trying to get ahead of the problem at that time versus letting it sit there. The reason why the three million, the old plant isn't being in service right now is because the requirements that the DEP has in, in place. They didn't make the proper investments to make sure that was up to code. And from my understanding, the bio, uh, hazard dryer, that really, from an innovation perspective, you're trying to monetize waste. And monetizing waste, if it was actually properly staffed to actually use that dryer, that's another, uh, monetization vehicle that you can. Make that as a revenue source and not have to increase the rates on your taxpayers. So to sit there and say that's unnecessary spending or it's additive to the sixty million dollar, and I'm glad that you said that it was necessary spending in your comments. You basically said it was consent order and the sixty million dollars was absolutely necessary for the city to expend, and I completely agree. And I know that there's a, there's a, um, a talk track that says that I was the one who motioned and. And, and set that in motion. I wish that I was the person that did that, but it was, uh, Commissioner Velazquez at the time, when you were seated on council, Commissioner Ruth. Uh, Commissioner Dean, um, Commissioner Aerosmith and Mayor Kilzheimer that had the foresight to do that expansion at the time and properly so. So I thank you, Commissioner Velazquez, for doing that. I just wanna set the record straight.
All right, Commissioner Becker, former Commissioner Becker, I got a couple of questions just to clarify and make sure we're on the same page. The, uh, the sixty million that you referenced, there was a reference of something like twenty-two million that was wasted at one point. Is that inclusive in that sixty million?
Correct. So sixty million dollars, so basically when you look at the old wastewater treatment plant, it was three million gallons per day, I think is the, the right terminology. The two, there was an actual D, there was a state mandate, I think going back to two thousand four was when the state originally came to the city of Apapka. They kinda let it slide for a period of time, and then twenty fourteen was when it was made known to the city that they actually had to make sure that they did the spend. And then the consent order was put down, meaning you don't have any other options to kick the can down the road. You have to do the expenditure. The city could have just done the five million dollar, or the five million gallon per day expansion and just let the other one, you know, wither away and do away with it, demolish it, what have you. But that was the conversation at the staff level, administration level at that point, is to say, well, let's retrofit it, bring it up to code at that point in time to make sure that. We can do it at two thousand sixteen prices versus waiting and doing it, you know, ten, twenty years down the line. So that piece, the bio hazard, the bio solid dryer, I'm not an expert on these terminologies, but the bio, uh, uh, dryer. And then the five million gallon expansion was all done within the sixty million dollar expenditure. Now, I can't speak to the Lust Road issue because I'm not familiar with that one. That happened before my time. Uh, but that's my understanding of how that all went down. Again, the actual expansion and improvements. Were approved by the prior sitting council prior to my seat. What happened when I sat on seat four where you sit today. Is there was an appropriation, it was an accounting function, like we've done many different times. There was already a, a motion put in place, the, the approval, the commitment to doing the state loan. And then what I approved or motioned for was to make sure that all of the accounting to support what had already been previously approved went into, went into place.
Okay, thank you. And then to confirm, that wasn't, so this wasn't taken out of reserves?
No. I mean, it was, it was.
The loan.
It was debt financed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So here we are, um.
So this is, um, the tentative budget.
Yes.
And Commissioner, like, the add the ten thousand, I can do that in the final. Yeah, I just gotta get this add. I had to send it to him this morning. And wait on proof, so if any other things, I'll add that ten thousand in the final. So we're at the two oh one, seven ten, seven ninety-nine. For the tentative budget.
Any thoughts? Not look for a motion to approve the tentative budget and any adjustments resulting from the public here. So none from the public.
Not right now, added in the final. He's agreed to that.
So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta. Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, need to announce the final budget hearing scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four at six P M at the city council chambers. I need a motion to schedule the final budget hearing for September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four at six P M. So, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be right back for a city council meeting.